Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer asking for so much when we give so little. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and for the protection of our loved ones. Lead us to help others in a time of need. Be with all that are suffering from sickness, depression, or addiction. Heal their body and minds and show us the way to support their families in a time of confusion. Lord, we pray that you provide us a way to recovery for all that are in need of your touch. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Next is a special presentation. We have a retiree with us tonight. Johnny, would you want to come forward and bring any of your family or anyone you want to bring with you?
Nobody wants to come with.
Johnny just recently retired from our utilities department and he's been with us over 28 years. But he's also been a special person in our utilities department because he's arranged all of the special projects as far as cooking when we had city picnics or things like that. So Johnny, we're going to miss you for more than one reason, but we hope you will come back and continue to cook.
Jimmy will take care of all that for you.
In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Johnny M. Lambert, who on August the 1st, 2019, retired from deployment with the City of Albemarle after 28.58 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Next is approval amended. Consider approval of the August 5th regular session, August 5th closed session, August 6th adjourned session, August 19th adjourned session, and August 19th closed session minutes.
Lute approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Lauder. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is we have a couple of public hearings. Number five, ordinance 1925 to request the rezoning of 802 Salisbury Avenue, tax record 35723, from R8 to General Highway Business District. Staff, would you introduce, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this is a proposed rezoning of, for tax parcel 35723 located at 802 Salisbury Avenue. The parcel size is 31,000 square feet, approximately three quarters of an acre. The applicant is Robert Lee Hathcock and the owner is Chuck Nance, Chucky Nance. And the requested zoning change is to go from two-family residential district R8 to General Highway Business District, GHBD. The parcel of interest is currently zoned R8 residential and contains an unused community building at present, which is known as the Cannon Hut. The district allows for primarily single and two-family residential with churches, schools, daycares, nurseries, community centers, parks, libraries, and other public uses on a conditional use basis with those. The owner would like to use the existing structure and property for an auction house. GHBD allows for auction houses where all sales are conducted within enclosed structure and no goods or wares are stored or displayed on the premises outside the auction house and there is provided one space of off-street parking for each four seats of patron use plus one space for each 100 square feet of floor space. Further, the GHB district is designed to serve those commercial activities which function relatively independent of intense pedestrian traffic and which should not be located in the CBD or NBD districts. The General Highway Business District should be located along state and federal highways or other highways designated as major streets and should be established in zones of two acres or larger. Right now, as I mentioned, it is a vacant community building. The adjacent uses are all two-family residential district. Adjacent zoning, there is a church next door on one of those. There are city services there. The currently adopted land use plan classifies this property and all surrounding properties as neighborhood residential and these are areas located in the city's corporate limits and include many mature neighborhoods. Public utilities are available and an extensive road and sidewalk network already exists. These areas are intended to provide for residential infill development with a wide range of housing types surrounding the town center area. Low-intensity business uses located in mixed-use buildings or buildings designated and constructed at a residential scale and appearance are also appropriate. And development considerations include compatibility of infill development with the existing building patterns. Typical residential and other districts that coincide with the neighborhood residential would be your R8A, your R8 to a certain extent, and your RO, and then in some cases, NBD. Staff's comments are that 802 Salisbury Avenue is currently zoned R8 two-family residential district. It's immediately surrounded by predominantly an older established neighborhood of single-family homes with some church and school uses close by, all zoned R8. The only other zoning districts in the area are a handful of office buildings in the RO residential office district off of Carolina Avenue and a largely undeveloped LID zone property further up Salisbury Road containing a small warehouse building at present. With the exception of this last use, all other uses are consistent with the overall residential character and scale of the neighborhood residential land use designation of the City of Albemarle 2028 Land Use Plan. GHBD in the zoning ordinance designates allowed uses as serving commercial areas along major highways largely independent of heavy pedestrian traffic, not consistent with Central Business District and NBD, as I mentioned earlier. The most similar future land use designation meeting these criteria is in the commercial land use category of the future land use map. And these are areas that are generally located along major thoroughfares that contain a wide array of commercial uses. Typical retail uses include shopping centers, restaurants, convenience stores. Other heavier use may include mini warehouses and automobile sales lots. Development considerations include traffic, compatibility with the budding residential areas, and the appearance of new and existing development as well as the availability of adequate infrastructure. Staff does not find this current location to meet the current criteria provided for in either the future land use map nor the description of the General Highway Business District in our zoning ordinance. The site is smaller than two acres, accessed on all sides by small two-lane roads inadequate for heavy traffic and in close proximity to residences. There is a concern that both the proposed auction house and a large number of the other allowed uses in the GHB district would be of much higher intensity than the surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, with no other GHBD zoned properties within some distance and no future land use designation for such a zoning, this may represent both an unjustified spot zoning and a precedent which could prove harmful in the preservation of the character of the residential neighborhood, which is a goal of future land use plan. Staff understands a desire to reuse this property and structure and believes it could be once again of benefit to the community. Apart from redevelopment of the site for residential use, the current zoning of R8 would allow for the conditional use approval for the reuse of this community structure by either the church, the city, or nonprofit. Also, private daycares, nurseries, small schools would also be possible. With nearby RO zoning, rezoning for low-intensity office uses would also be possible and consistent with the future land use map. There are several options for this property, for the use of this property which do not necessitate rezoning it to GHBD and the wide number of incompatible uses that that would allow. At its July 2nd meeting, Planning Board heard and considered the application and voted seven to zero to recommend that council deny the requested zoning map amendment to rezone 802 Salisbury Avenue from R8 to GHBD. And Planning Board recommended that council adopt a statement of inconsistency for this requested amendment and we have provided those statements below.
Counsel, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against can come forward. Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Robinson, before we bring up the next speaker? Come on up. I had several people sign up, or a couple of people sign up to speak. You did not have to sign up tonight. This is a public hearing, so anybody who wants to speak will be allowed to come forward and speak.
I was going to ask if anybody else would want to address the council. I don't know if they have a minute.
Anyone else care to speak? I've had Joel Grudger sign up. Do you want to speak? Come on forward if you want to speak.
I was just going to make the statement, but what has already been read that I agree with that. I would be against it as a property owner right across the road.
Sir, would you speak in that microphone a little bit better? We'll hear you a little better. Might need to pull it down a little bit to you. There you go.
As a property owner right across the road, I'd hate to see any other business as well as this one get into it in the future. We don't know what that might hold and I would just be in favor of not doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Sir, you've got somebody else coming.
Pull it down a little bit more for you.
I'm right across the street, the corner from that place.
Tell us your name and address, please.
Well, I'm Donna Eifert, 720 Salisbury Avenue. Okay. I'm against it because I'm right across the street and if the auction didn't work, he could do whatever in there, right? Is that right?
That meets general, if it's rezoned, the General Highway Business District.
Right. He could put a car lot or whatever, right? It wouldn't necessarily be that little auction thingy that that's what the selling point was. Anyway, I'm against it. I'm sorry, but I don't want a bunch of mess over there, right? When I look out my kitchen window to see a bunch of mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you and I certainly respect the two people who came up previously.
Clark, will you please speak into that mic?
I will.
Thank you.
I will. I want to put a little different viewpoint on this and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Chuck Nance. Basically, in the fall of 2017, Mr. Nance verified with the city that the Boy Scout Hall Assembly, known as the Cannon Hut, I think it's been used like that for 40 years, longer than I've been in Albemarle for sure, and the auction business were the same use. He got that information prior to purchasing the property. And what we're talking about today is being able to rely on the information that you're given. Forty years, the same use, he got that confirmed. So in December 19th, 2017, he purchased the property. When he turned the property, wanted to turn the power on, he was told that he had to go get a city coordination form. And I prepared some copies of that for council, if I may approach.
Sure.
This form is instructive. I first direct your attention to the date it was received. It's 4/11/18, so not that long ago. And if you look down under section two, it says property and building purpose information. It said previous building use if known, assembly hall. Proposed building use, assembly hall. So there, it was clear there was no change in use and that's further verified if you turn over to the next page and if you go to section four, North Carolina Building Code classification, it says, is this a change in use? The box, no. So who was this signed off by? That's, I think that's important. If you look at it, I don't pretend to know whose signature that is. I can't make it out, but it's the signature of somebody on the planning staff. If you go below that, I know Mr. Rourke's signature, the fire marshal, signed off on it in two places. So Mr. Nance, we would contend, had the right to rely on the fact that there was no change in use, that it was going to be consistent with what it had been used for for 40 years. This was issued, power was turned on, and I'll direct you on this form one more time to section five, power authorization. There are three places here, provisional power, temporary power, or power authorized. It was not provisional power, it was not temporary power, it was, power was authorized. Mr. Nance then undertook to put a new roof on the building, take some windows, do some improvements, paint. And this is what I think we should encourage in the community, to fix things and build things up, and he certainly did that. At that point, it rocks along for a little bit and then Mr. Nance leases this property to an individual in 2019, May 15th, 2019.
What was that date again?
May 15th, 2019. He leased this property to Mr. Hathcock, who appears on your petition. He wasn't going to use it for anything different than what it had been used for for 40 years, an assembly hall, place for people to gather for auction. And basically, he started improving it as well. He was making some replacements on the door and I think he was doing some work on a deck. And when he started that, he realized he had to get a permit and all of a sudden, the coordination form is now being revoked. He can't get a coordination form for that. So Mr. Nance has now paid the money to ask this planning board to reconsider and rezone because way back in 2017, he relied on the assertion this was not a change in use. I've come to ask this board to do something a little unusual and that is to refer this back to the planning committee and have the individuals that are currently in litigation with Mr. Nance in both state and federal court recuse themselves from playing any role in this decision. And I think this is important because it protects both sides of this. There is an individual who played a key role in this, who I'm not going to name, but he is named in federal court and he was certainly intricate and involved in the state litigation between this city and my client. We would ask that you refer it back, ask the folks who have been named or who were intimately involved with the litigation against my client to recuse themselves. That way, we can be assured that any decision that this council either ratifies or does not ratify is protected procedurally as well as due process concerns or basically not only acknowledged but taken seriously because it is my understanding from my client. And I don't contend I was at that meeting, but one of the individuals, and I'm sure every council member knows, who has been named, I contend should not have played a role in this decision. So all we are asking is for fairness here and asking this council to refer it back to the planning board with some new information maybe and to remove folks that maybe tank the process and then take a fresh look at it. And with that, I appreciate your time and attention.
Robinson, whose signature is this?
Sure, I'll show it to you real quick. It's right here.
Yeah, I've got it right in here. This is Nasser. Nasser signed these and he signed this for Michael Rourke, talking to Michael on the phone, which is, he does, he did quite a bit while he was here. And again, these are North Carolina Building Code classifications. These are not zoning classifications. Clearly, Nasser typed in here, use isn't, continued use as an assembly hall for our zoning is not allowed per chapter 92. He wrote that in there. Power authorization was for removal of items in the interior. It's a standard process that we do that. We encourage people to work on buildings, however, this use is not permitted. And the applicant was told that, the owner was told that at that time.
Question, since you just brought that up. Okay, refresh everyone's mind what chapter 92 is.
92 is a zoning ordinance.
Okay, just for everybody up here. Very good.
Kevin, you said the owner was made aware of that? Was that the actual owner or the person renting the building?
The owner was made aware of that. And also right here, if you'll notice, that Nasser did check, proposed use permitted. He did check no on that as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to those comments. First of all, I am not under the understanding that my client was informed with that. And I'd like to also go to that section, section three of the coordination form that was just referred to. It says, proposed use permitted, no. It had never been permitted, but it had been done that way for 40 years. But if you look underneath the comment that he just referred to, it says, further action required, no. So basically, you can read that to say there was no other action required to do what he wanted to do here. In other words, there's three blocks that weren't mentioned that say conditional use, text amendment, or map amendment. They weren't requiring Mr. Nance to do anything. And again, the form acknowledges no change in use. So I think it's a matter of, I can't, I can tell you, my client certainly does not feel he was informed that he could not continue using it in the way that it was being used because that would fly in the face of common sense. Why would Mr. Nance have purchased the property if he had been informed of that? That would have made no sense and we would contend that was not the case.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Roll tide.
Thank you. Let's assume that it has been used as an assembly hall. You're saying that it will continue to be used as an assembly hall. However, in general highway business, there are many other uses that could be put to other than an assembly hall. And if we approve a rezoning, then that would open up to anything that's under general highway business could then be used, could be done on that lot. Is there possibly any other zoning designation that would tie it to an assembly hall without opening it up to all the things that are on general highway business?
That's an excellent question. I think what you could do is allow the non-conforming use to continue as it has for 40 years without rezoning the property all the way to general business use. And I think that would give you a limited range of what it could be used for. And in essence, I think I hear what you're saying. I think that would lock Mr. Nance into that and it would not allow the fears that were eloquently expressed up here by the two people before me, that anything goes there. But, so I think there is a middle ground there.
Okay, the only other thing, it seems to me that to be used as a boy scout hut, even though that's called assembly, would be totally different than an auction house.
And that was a concern to my client as well. And that's why when he went to the inspector Chris Moon and asked that question, he was assured by Mr. Moon that they would be considered the same use.
Mr. Robinson, can a conditional use be used in this district?
Not for this use. And I should state that even though we have assembly hall on here, because that's what Nasser was told this was before, was led to believe it was that, we define auction house in our ordinance, so it has a separate definition. We would consider it assembly hall because of that definition. No, it's in, I believe, GHBD, LID, and HID are the allowed districts for auction house. As I mentioned, there's other, the church could possibly use this, could be used for schools, daycares, other things right now with the conditional use in R8. Certainly RO would also allow for some other uses, but not for auction house or other uses like that. Offices and those types of things, but not auction houses.
Has the suggestion that Mr. Bramlett just made been discussed with our city attorney? Has that come up before or not?
What's that?
What he just talked about, non-conforming use?
It's been vacant for over 180 days, which it's not grandfathered in. It had been several, several years since it was in use, so it's not grandfathered in anymore. To my knowledge, I don't think, I don't think you can go back to something after it's been discontinued.
In your knowledge, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
When was it last used?
It hadn't been used since I was here at least, which is middle of 2016. And I think it was, it sounded like it was several years before that, but I don't have an exact date on that.
And may I ask if...
Any of the neighbors know? Donna, you have any idea when it was last used?
It wasn't 2016. Ain't nobody getting there. That don't even come out at dawn.
I would have been here since 2000.
Thank you. So since 2002, you know that nobody's been in there.
Yes, I'll go ahead.
The second thing is, was the coordination form, strike that, hold on a minute. Do you staff the planning board meeting? Would you have been at that planning board meeting on July 2nd?
Yes, I was.
Was this coordination form given to...
Yes, it was addressed at that time.
So while you're there, Mr. Robinson, obviously from what Mr. Bowlin said, he got some information from our county building inspector, Chris Moon, right? And from what you just said, as far as our definition, our ordinance about auction houses, it seemed like his interpretation in our ordinance is conflicting.
Well, Nasser was never told auction house to begin with. He was told it was an assembly use and we're going to go back and do that. It was very vague and he said it's not allowed. Assembly use isn't allowed. Auction house, to my knowledge, was not even brought up at that time when Mr. Nance came in originally. What was approved with this was for the power to be turned back on and for minor repairs to be done, stuff to be moved out, just, we do that quite a bit. A building permit on this for anything, any major building permits would have also required an additional form at that time. And we probably would have gotten a little bit more detail based on those plans, what was going to go on there. That's typically how we do it. A lot of times people buy properties, don't have an immediate use for them, want to fix them, hang on to them till they find a use and that's, so that's why this was done this way.
If I could just clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but there are two different things going on when you're talking about the use. One is the North Carolina Building Code, fire protection, life safety issues. So that's where you've got the signature that assembly for the structure itself may be permitted. So it means as far as the building code goes, there's not a particular change that's required there.
Fire and building code is, their assembly is much wider in range typically with what we've got in ordinance, who we consider assembly, something related to a church, a nonprofit, Boy Scouts, those types of things.
And what they'd be looking at is access, ingress, egress, sprinklers, those sorts, how many people are going to be in there, those sorts of things. That's separate from all, and that has to be satisfied, but also that is separate from the zoning. So Chris Moon, if he was, or the county building, whoever it is, the county would not be speaking on behalf of zoning. They'd be speaking regarding their knowledge of life safety codes. That's separate from, is it a proper and allowable use under our zoning ordinance? So I want to clarify that for council in case there's misunderstanding regarding that.
Follow it. So, fine, Mr. Bowlin's comment, this was leased to Mr. Hathcock. Come back up, it's going to be, actually, they addressed you. I'm giving some background just based on what I've just heard. It was leased on 5/15/19.
That is correct.
Coordination form was received 4/11/18, so 13 months before.
That's correct.
And it was not until a month later, exactly, 28 days later, 6/13/19, Kevin, that any mention of auction house came about on the application, on the zoning map application. Is that correct?
There was work going on there unpermitted and we were alerted to by building inspections and the fire marshal. And at that time, we asked Mr. Nance what was being proposed there and he said that it was going to be an auction house. That's when Nasser went and said, okay, well, you need to do the rezoning now for that.
We would, we would obviously dispute that, but that's...
I'm just going by what's in front of me. By hearing Mr. Bowlin, it was leased in May of 19.
Correct.
By Mr. Hathcock.
Correct.
June of 19, just in that next month, is when the first mention of auction house came about and it was in the zoning map application change based on, whatever it's based on. That's the first mention you've had one, right? Is that right, Mr. Robinson?
That's, to my knowledge... That, to my knowledge, is the first time we've heard about it being an auction house.
And we obviously would dispute that.
Counsel, have you further questions?
Have one.
Yes, ma'am.
What is there involved to us that was not available to the zoning board when they considered this and they took action? Is there anything different about what we're looking at than what they looked at?
Not to my knowledge. Staff's review, the application, that should all be the same thing, the same thing that planning board got. You guys got notifications for advertisement, stuff like that on there? That's about it.
This is not a common practice, what NOSER done where he signed the fire marshal's signature, is it?
He has. He calls, he calls Michael, Michael's out for a few days, talked to him, so.
That was...
Yeah, we don't do that anymore. I told him we don't need to do that anymore. So, but it was really, it was being done to, to help the applicants around so they could go and get started, not to wait for several days to get the sign up.
That was a recommendation of our Business Development Task Force, that when folks have a building and they're going to make some, regardless of what they're proposing, if they're going to make, get the power on to get in there to do some cleaning, do some minor repair work that doesn't affect the use or require permits and that kind of thing, people can get into the building. So that's where that call is made, verification, so that the power can be switched on to allow folks to do that.
Follow-up. So based on what Mr. Bowlin has asked for, stay right there. Mr. Bowlin has asked that we send it back to planning and zoning, number one. Mr. Bramlett made a very good comment or question, asking if anything was given to us tonight that was not given to them when they met in July. And it's everybody's understanding that what they had is the same things we have in front of us. Is that basically, Mr. Bowlin?
Except for the fact that what was given to them was interpreted by somebody who's currently in litigation in federal court.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Just a minute. Anyone else care to speak, for or against? Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, how you wish to proceed?
I think the comment that everything we've had tonight is basically what they had six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. How, how practical is it sending something back if it's the same, if it's the same information?
It seems to me if the vote had been five to four or something like that, and we had some, a little bit different, we might be justified. But I'll be honest with you, I think if we send this back, it appears as though we're not having confidence in our zoning boards, since they voted nine to nothing.
Seven to nothing.
If it were different there, then I can see we might be able to do that. But under the circumstances, I'm just reluctant to send that thing back with, with the strongest statement as they made.
I agree with that. Only thing I'm a little cautious on, I would just want to make sure that our ordinance, as far as with auction houses being required in GHBD, that we somewhat consistent with what other municipalities are doing with a similar use, you know? Is there not any options whatsoever to consider such a thing as an auction house in a residential neighborhood with a conditional use permit, you know? I hope that we've covered our ground in making sure that we don't have any options that we can do to allow that under no circumstances. I'm not in favor of the general highway business district, but I am still pro-business.
I wish there were some other zoning or something that could confine that to this without opening it up to just anything that's under general highway.
Right.
Ultimately, I wish there were some, that's why I asked the question, is there an alternative zoning or something like that that would do that? And what I'm hearing is, there isn't.
If counsel wishes for staff to reach out to some other cities and see if there's anything out there that we're not covering or incorrectly covering, staff will be glad to do that for us. At this point, I can't answer that question.
But that was quite unusual.
Well, we'd have to give some directions to staff to look at it, but first you have this on the table, so what do you want to do about this request?
And we can do one of three things, as I understand it. We can table it, we can pass it, or we can deny it.
Table it.
Table it.
I would entertain a motion to do that, if you're going to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the September 16th meeting.
If you're going to ask to, if you're going to ask to go redo some research, I think you need to do it more than just two more times.
Let's table this until the first, first meeting in October.
I just want to know what we're asking.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. I have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge to table this to the first meeting in October.
To give staff...
And you wish staff to do what?
Look at other municipalities, like Councilmember Townsend was saying, and just make sure there's nothing else out there that they're doing different that we can look at.
Are you asking us to see if a conditional use is allowed in GHBD in other municipalities?
Yes.
Okay.
Not GHBD.
No, not GHBD. RN, R-8.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Conditional use permit in R-8.
Where conditional use is allowed?
See if there's any way we can make this work without changing it to GHBD with a conditional use permit.
Okay, but we're going into text amendment territory then, if you want to do that. So you want me to look at what is done?
Let's explore and see what, if anybody...
If you come back with something that we need to change, then we'll have to go through the text amendment process. Yours is after right. I have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge, a second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? No questions. Is there a time limit we have to act? There are time limits, there's not a time limit on this, we have to act, the coordination form is, or the permit. Further? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, we also have another public hearing, number six, ordinance 1933, Amendments to the Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 93 of the city ordinance. Ellie, would you come up and introduce, and then I think we have some questions about the information that was provided? I'm not sure we saw the changes.
Yes. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Ellie Shield. I'm a planning specialist, and I work under Kevin Robinson in the planning department. Thank you all for taking the time to review this possible text amendment. Mayor, what would you like to ask regarding that?
Well, I guess first, you showed markups. I did not see any markups, so I don't know, I don't think counsel has had an opportunity to see this.
There's not a markup.
So to be honest with you, I don't think we should proceed at all tonight, but since with public hearings been advertised, I want to see if anybody is here to speak for it hence. But I think we should continue the public hearing and let you get this information back out to us.
Okay, thank you for those comments. We believe, and I noticed it this afternoon, that when the Word document was converted to a PDF in order to be uploaded to NOVUS, these track changes were lost. I have an electronic copy as well as printed hard copies for your review.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak for or against the Amendments to the Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 93? Go ahead and make your comments, and then I'll ask, I'm going to ask counsel to continue the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So in April 2019, FEMA conducted a standard and periodic community assistance visit in which they lend their technical expertise to our administration of the flood damage prevention ordinance. It was during this meeting that representatives from FEMA recommended the following changes based on the state model ordinance, which is put out by the Department of Public Safety. They have given us a deadline till the end of September to complete this request. The inability to adopt these changes could jeopardize the city's standing with FEMA and our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The recommended changes to our ordinance are based on this 2017 state model, and all changes have been reviewed and given tentative approval by staff with the Department of Public Safety as well as FEMA. Planning staff does believe that none of these changes significantly alter the intent or purpose of the ordinance, and all changes would put Albemarle in a stronger position to become a community rating system, which essentially provides its citizens discounts on flood insurance, which is a long-term goal I have in my position as the floodplain administrator. Any optional items that staff felt further restricted development in these areas, we did not include unless absolutely required by the national and state organizations. And updates that we're making typically will just impact the administration of regulation, but do not negatively disrupt development possibilities in the special flood hazard area. These changes also do not affect the boundaries of our currently adopted flood insurance rate map.
Just a question.
Sure.
So I'm holding, we're sharing these, because we didn't have enough, which is okay. The markup, if we look at the markup to what's in front of us, okay? And you, I don't know, you have a markup, you have a markup on the screen, but within our information, board information, it's not marked up. Is that correct?
That is correct. The changes were uploaded to the NOVUS agenda, and what was uploaded is the first document was the ordinance currently as written, and the second was with these proposed changes. However, those changes were not highlighted as we intended.
The highlights didn't show up, because I'm trying to compare and contrast them now. So what we have in front of us on the screen in our packet, though it does not say markup, it is the updated.
Yes, that is correct.
It just doesn't have the, the highlighted markup.
Yes, and I was disappointed when I realized that, because a lot of these changes are very technical, minor, minor changes. I also went through two or three times comparing word for word with the state model ordinance, as well as fixing minor grammar issues that were currently in our ordinance.
Mayor, if I may, I was one of the ones that said, "Wait a minute, I don't have a markup, okay?" But this is the fixed one that was in our packet, number one, except for some subsections, when you've highlighted, you go to different letters. For instance, Chapter 9304 objectives, okay? It is not, it doesn't go straight through. You've got some missing letters there, okay? At least on the one that's in front of me, okay?
Yes.
I heard you say that we have got to turn this thing around by the end of September.
Yes.
By September 30th, number one. Number two, we all know what is floating around out in the, in the Atlantic Ocean right now. I don't want anything to hold us back from any possible FEMA in the future, okay? I don't have a problem if what's in front of us, she's gone through it, it might not be red, the markups might not be right in front of us, but it is what we have had over the weekend is the updated one. Is that correct?
Yes. And to your point, while we have been given a deadline with FEMA, I've worked very diligently to continue our conversations that occurred in April, and I do believe that if we needed more time, I could, I could get that worked out with them.
I don't see the need for it personally. I say that, I mean, what we've had in front of us, though it was not marked up, is correct, except for your letters. We need to go back in and to make sure that some of those letters, particularly 9304, is the only one I've looked at.
Yes.
Okay? I don't have any problem with moving forward on it.
Even federal and state laws, I don't think we've really got a whole lot of option anyway.
I would place on the table, though we don't have it, that we approve it as...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're still in a public hearing. Anyone care to speak, for or against?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If I'm wanted to build a house in a floodplain, could I do that?
So the definition of floodplain is essentially any area that could be inundated by water. And within floodplains, there are established and designated flood zones. It is the zones that establish, and Albemarle is primarily AE zone, which means that each year there's a 1% chance of your land being flooded. And you can build a house in the flood zone with a floodplain development permit, provided that it meets all criteria established by the national program. And that, in City of Albemarle, with the state laws as well, is two feet above whatever base flood elevation, or you could floodproof your residence to that point.
We've had some issues with existing flood problems. Is there anything in here that's going to change the way we've addressed those issues?
So the only changes that are made according to how we would address possible violations are in the last section of the ordinance. And I would like to comment that most of our ordinance not only meets, but in most areas exceeds these national standards. That bodes very well for us in trying to achieve what I would like to get us to in being a CRS community. So as far as the violations and enforcement that is at the last section, the only changes I have made to that, per the state model ordinance, are specifying that it is a Class 1 misdemeanor, citing the general statute, as well as upping the fine from $50 to $100, which are all changes recommended by the state. As far as outstanding violations or how these policies were enforced, I believe that as a whole, the city is in a much better position to stay on top of these developments by creating a dialogue and catching these early on. As you noticed earlier, in these coordination forms, applicants and staff must check whether each property is located in that special flood hazard area. So that allows us, before any development commencement begins, I'm allowed to reach out to them and explain exactly what those standards are and provide options for how to build.
Mr. Ferris, since we're talking about changing penalties, does that require us to do a notification on that new requirement that legislature is working on?
I don't want to say for certain, but we were and did, were required, and we did comply with the request back late 2018, early 2019, to submit everything that had some sort of penalty associated with it. So if this had, if this had an existing penalty, then it would have been reported at that time. Does that answer your question?
We just want to make sure that we don't have that problem.
I would also like to point out to the mayor's question that no projects that are ongoing currently would be impacted by these changes. We've looked at the, I've researched thoroughly, the possibility of exemptions as we want, like many of our parks are in these flood zones, the ability to promote common open space and not development that could harm property and life. Unfortunately, I could not find any other place that put into the ordinance those exemptions, nor did the state recommend putting exemptions in here, so.
And there's nothing in here that changes that would restrict, from our point, more than state law. We do not restrict berms in flood areas beyond what state law allows, correct?
Yes. FEMA provides a technical bulletin for things like berms, levees, and dikes. The standards, anybody can protect a building with those measures. They even have the option at that point to make a map appeal to FEMA to actually remove their structure from that flood hazard area, provided that it is built to the national standards.
Mayor, I am most impressed with Ellie and our people in this office that the city has. But as I look at this thing, over 20 pages of pure legalese.
Thank you.
Chapters, articles, parts, chapters, article, parts, overlapping each other and that sort of thing. Do you all sit in your office and dream this stuff up? Or does this come essentially from something put... Or does this come essentially from something put out by the federal government or the state government?
Everything else is dream up.
I didn't hear that, Kevin.
Everything else.
Everything else.
Dr. Bramlett, that's a really good question. Thank you for that. I will say that these changes would not have occurred without FEMA coming in and saying that we have to make these changes to comply. However, North Carolina is very unique in that we have resources at the state level when it comes to floodplain development that many other places do not have, one of which being our online point-click system. Only us in Florida have that ability, and I can basically go in on these buildings and click with my mouse and get the base flood elevation, which does save me more time in helping draft these ordinances, the language of which is primarily from the state model ordinance. However, Kevin and I worked very diligently in selecting optional things that we did not believe could negatively impact development while maintaining much of the higher standards that put us in a very strong position moving forward.
Counsel, have any further questions of Ellie?
Just one more. I may have been reading when you said this and didn't hear it. Is this pretty much solely the result of the gentleman who came in from FEMA back after the last flooding?
Pardon?
What was the guy, the gentleman's name who came in?
The guy that was on contract.
Yeah, he was contracted to come in and review.
I did meet those people. That is not, these are people out of Region 4 in the FEMA Atlanta office.
So we're still to get some hard copy from that at some point, okay?
I'd be happy to look into that for you, but.
And I just wanted to know if we were looking for something else after this. I guess we are.
Counsel, have any other questions?
Move the public hearing to be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Talonson. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Stay right there. I'm going to move that we approve what has been proposed to us with the changes, and I found another one under encroachment, it's just a spelling error, but it's okay. I think if you go down there, it's just a spacing thing. Again, I was just contrasting. I would just move approval.
Of ordinance 1933?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 1933, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all for taking the time to read it and catch those changes.
Thank you.
Great job.
I'd have caught more if I had the markup, I'm just.
Have no agenda adjustments unless counsel has some? I'll move into announced allegations. Number seven, Ms. Loretta McLester, 3204 Greenwood Park Circle, to request consideration for a water leak.
This is actually the residence of my mother.
Speaking to.
Can't hear you, ma'am.
This is actually the residence of my mother, and she has been in the nursing home for approximately a year. I normally go in several times a week. I hadn't noticed anything, and then we got the bill, and from there, this is where we are.
What are you asking for, ma'am? This is outside of policies. I need to know what you're asking for.
What I would like to know is, can it be reduced on behalf of the fact that it is a vacant residence? And that, you know, I have checked it, and we did find that the flapper in the toilet was not working properly. It was changed. I had a plumber come check all the plumbing. I had him check the commodes themselves. He found no issues.
Except for the flapper.
I changed the flapper myself. Yes, that was all it was. I changed that myself.
Counsel, you hear her request. How does counsel wish to proceed?
Your Honor, if I may ask, it looked like in the packet, the monthly water bill is typically around $69, is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's everything. That's electric and water.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And this bill was like $8.55 or something, is that right?
The actual bill was $8.6343.
The average water has been $12.91. The average sewer has been $10.64.
So $12.91.
Typically, counsel, if this had been an outside leak, would we give a total, sorry?
Sorry, total sewer.
Total sewer rebate or reduce the amount, reduce the amount of the charge, and water normally half. Since this was inside of a house, there is no policy on this, so it's going to be up to counsel to determine what you wish to do.
Just throw something out. What if we reduced it to double the average over the last several months? Not go all the way, but.
Double the average.
Because that's a pretty tough, tough road to home right there.
Double the average.
So what dollar amount, Dr. Bramlett, are you saying?
Whatever it is. Take the average over the last four months.
So the average usage in cubic.
Since it's vacant.
We're going by the cubic feet, right? Of the water usage.
Whatever it is, and just double it.
If you will tell staff the method, staff will be glad to figure it and get with Ms. McLester. Just need to know what kind of method you're looking at.
Well, if you look at the last, if you look at other than July, if you look at June, May, April, and March, okay? The average for those four months would be one cubic, one cubic feet a month. And we know that if it would have been outside, one more time, if it were outside, we would completely.
We'd have completely.
Forgive.
Forgive the sewer and half of the water.
Because it didn't go in the sewer.
Right.
We would not have treated it. This is a little different situation.
Right. And the sewer of this one is 416.
I think what I'm hearing Mr. Bramlett put out is, the balance, you say it's about $69?
Yes.
So you're looking at double that, about roughly $140 is what Mr. Bramlett is proposing.
Yeah, so that's a laker.
We've got to have some guideline tonight.
So that would bring it from $8.66 or $8.5593 to roughly $140?
I think staff needs something other than just a dollar figure. They need to work with the cubic feet.
That $69 figure also included electric. So basically, if the house is vacant, it's paying minimum charges. So again, I think if you talked about, hold on one moment, double the, shoot, double the sewer, you'd be doubling about $11, $12 for water and $11, $12 for sewer. That's right around where the minimum is for each.
And double that.
You would double that, so you'd probably have, you know, right around $50, $45 to $50.
I've got no problem with that.
And that's an amount, but we've got to figure out the method behind that.
Right, if you tell us the method, we'll do the calculations on the bill, that's.
Prior to that, let's see, her next highest bill was in, as far as water usage, was August 2018, correct? As far as cubic feet.
Water, no. Yeah, next highest, yeah.
390 cubic feet. What if we doubled that amount and based it off that? That's the highest, you know, because right now, for the month of July, she's been charged $13,794 cubic feet, you know, so.
From two.
To pay.
So you're basically saying, charge her for 780 cubic feet.
Correct. Horse is 13,794.
And give the rest. What dollar amount does that come out to?
They'll figure it out.
They'll calculate it, so they got a formula to do it.
Right.
All right, Ms. Hall's made a motion to do the 780 cubic feet.
Which is twice of the high.
Second by Councilmember Talonson.
The highest in the past year.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. McLester, you will get with our staff, give them a day or two and get with them, and they'll tell you what it would be.
Okay. And then, it is our practice, if we need time to get that up, we can, I mean, to pay it, isn't that right?
Sure, I don't know when this, let me see when this bill is actually due. Yeah, it was due in August, obviously. While this is going on, we know something's up, it's being appealed to counsel, so we'll work with her to make sure there's ample time to pay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, Ms. Rashonda Corpening, 727 Elizabeth Avenue. It's about a concerning abandoned property. I'm going to list Mr. Ferris, give you an update on that and what's going on.
Sure. This is the old Elks property, and off and on over the last few years, the city's moded it. We've had complaints about, because it's vacant, commercial, people loitering, then there's some litter that happens with it, so probably in the last couple of years, contacted, someone through the police department, contacted the State Elks Association and talked to them about it, and they worked with us to resolve those particular issues. But when you have a vacant or abandoned property, there's a lot of other issues. You chase down one issue, something else occurs. So since the time this item request came to the city, asked the police department, asked Chief Doolin to do a little bit more research, because he did, I wasn't sure that he was involved the last time this issue came about, and he'll fill you on some details, but he's reached out to the state association again, and think we have maybe a permanent solution to this problem, working its way through, and Chief can provide more details.
Sure, right. Reached out to William Smith. William Smith is the district deputy for the Improved Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, and he has, he remembered us working on this back in 2015, but did not.
Will you pull the mic up?
How about that?
Thank you.
Great. He remembered us working on this back in 2015, was one of our officers set out as a project to see what we could do to help out with the Elks Lodge issues. He said last he remembered, they were going to condemn that. He said he had never heard anything since from their legal counsel, so he would be in touch, and I had received about three phone calls today. The last phone call I received was from Mr. Smith, is that they are going to reach out to a real estate agent and place that property on the market for sale.
Where is he out of?
He is from Winston-Salem.
Winston-Salem.
And I have his name and number, if anybody needs that. And at one time, they were wanting to give it to the city, but I think that fell through, and now they're going to sell it and try to get a little bit of money out of it.
Because the Elks Club, North Carolina Elks Club owns it, is that correct?
That is correct. It is theirs.
Owned by someone other than Albemarle?
That is correct.
Yeah, and Ms. Courtney, she's been doing a lot of home improvements, and her house is directly beside it, so I can see her concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number nine, Ms. Laura Harbison, 72620 West Main Street, to discuss recent changes to the rules for the keeping of horses.
Hi, everybody. I might need to.
Pull it down.
Yeah, a little short. I'm Dr. Laura Harbison. It is hard to get used to saying doctor, so. I have an agenda or binder that is being passed out to everybody with a lot of information that I wish that I would have been able to give you a few weeks ago, excuse me, a few months ago, but I'm here to give it to you today. As it's being passed out, I promised one of my clients that I would read the note that you will find on the back of the agenda. She is a human sex trafficking victim that I serve out of Charlotte. It says, "When you think of horses, you think of just a beautiful, peaceful animal. Peace, that's what I wanted. I do not know how to express myself. Working with sage and saffron, I learned different ways to express myself. Sage taught me boundaries, that it is okay to be comfortable in my skin. She taught me that in life, your flaws are what you make, I'm sorry, that flaws are not what make you. Sage became a sister to me. We have very much in common. They make me feel at peace. Therapy wouldn't be therapy without them. Saffron is very strong. She taught me that it's okay to fall down as long as you get back up. They know when something is wrong. They are just like us, and without them, I would feel lost. Sage and saffron became a part of me. They helped me stay out of crisis. I love them. And if you were to remove them, just know you are hurting many that have befriended them from their services, and I am one of them." I speak a lot across the Southeast about complex trauma, sex trafficking, and about the therapy work that I do, but I've never been more nervous than today. So just bear with me, please, and I hope I can keep emotions back. I run Creative Counseling and Learning Solutions, which is at 2620 West Main Street in Albemarle, and we have two therapy horses on our team. They are emotional support-registered animals. They were rescued, however, you barely know that now. They're wonderful. So in the binder, I'm going to just quickly move you through it. A lot of this information you have already been emailed, but I put it in sections for you to be able to reference as needed. At first, it shows the certificate that I have as an equine specialist in mental health practices using horses. In addition to my PhD and my license to perform counseling services, I have a certification specific to using horses in therapy. Then you'll see sage and saffron's certificates as emotional support animals, and they are protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act because they are registered. We have a nonprofit side, and the Board of Directors' information is there, so you're welcome to contact them if needed, and our 501(c)(3) letter is behind it. There's a longer response to some of the claims that were made against my practice, against the horses, against me indirectly, that you have already received, but it's there for you to reference. One thing I haven't talked about is the current client demographics. This is very important because it's why I'm in Albemarle versus the county of Stanley County or in a different county, so I wanted to make sure you understood why we're here. Currently, and I'm just speaking about my clients, we have five other therapists that work with me out of the Stanley office, and we have a Concord office as well. I have 36 active clients. 14 of these receive individual equine-assisted therapy services with me, some seeing the horses once or twice a week. 10 of these clients receive equine-assisted group therapy services once a week with our Stable Relationships Program, which is a JCPC program that is funded for the second year now. 15 of my clients have a diagnosis of complex PTSD, which many of them have active cases open right now in the federal court system, so unfortunately, the U.S. Attorney's Office and the FBI could not be here today to speak with me. Four of the clients are experiencing other significant symptoms due to significant traumas. However, their traumas have occurred within the past six months, and they are all local here to Albemarle, so you've probably seen them on the news or in the newspaper about some of the horrible things that have happened in our community. I have 14 people that are Albemarle city residents, 15 that are in Stanley County in addition to those 14, two Cabarrus County, three Mecca County, and two Union County clients. We're also a teaching center, so we partner with universities from all over to have a collection of interns that are master's-level clinicians that are able to provide counseling services for free in this community. They all have to come to Stanley County to do the free services because I am the only one allowed to supervise them for their services due to my license level. So whereas I before was seeing about six clients a week for free, I supervise six interns a semester, and now we're having 60 clients a week we're seeing for free here in Stanley County. Common referral sources, I already mentioned the FBI and the U.S. Attorney's Office, the Esther House, and other agencies surrounding Stanley County that are for domestic violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking refer to me. The Department of Social Services, the juvenile justice system, the district attorney's offices, local law enforcement agencies, the school systems in Stanley County and surrounding school systems, various inpatient mental health hospitals, other counseling agencies, when they need the specialization of the equine therapy, they will partner with me for that service. And a lot of times, we get self-referrals from clients that have had people that they've heard from, like, oh my gosh, this worked. My kid never went to a therapist before and was able to have success, but they came here, and they had something called equine therapy, and it works. So we get a lot of that, too. So quickly, I'm just going to go through the facts that I'm going to argue today, which are all based. are all based on things that were said in the past two council meetings that I saw on video. I don't know if there were some closed session meetings, but these are two that I had learned about. Which, before I go into that, I was not notified of any of these claims before watching the last videos. The videos were sent to me by somebody who had seen the video themselves, and they forwarded it to me. I did not know that there was any claims against my horses by my neighbors or any concerns from zoning or planning or the city council. So I apologize if it's the first time you're hearing it. So there is a lot of stuff. So first, first claim that was mentioned against us was that we were claiming to be a counseling agency, and that we claimed that horses are rescue horses, that they, but they have never seen anyone petting, riding, or working with the horses. We are a counseling agency. We've been here in Stanley County for, wow, gosh, 2007. At our current location in Albemarle for a little over a year. And the reason we moved to Albemarle was so that way we could have transportation issues that were happening when we're in the county answered. Because we have a lot of people transported from the Esther House Shelter to our office for services, from inner city that are juvenile justice kids that just have complications of transportation that we are serving. So I already mentioned the horses are emotional support animals. They both have disabilities, which result in us not being able to ride them. So that part was true. We do not ride our horses. We have an average of four clients a day, though, that specifically come for equine therapy. And one thing that, I try to look at the bright side of everything, I guess it's part of being a counselor, is that I guess I've done a really good job at maintaining confidentiality if nobody has seen me out there with the horses with clients. So in addition to the clients that love on the horses, the horses also get loved by me very regularly. I wish they were here right now because I could really use to rub them, I'm so nervous. The office staff and volunteers and the interns also spend a lot of time with our horses. They are loved. They're a crucial part of our therapeutic team. There are some pictures that I have following that to show the horses in action without showing any clients' faces, but you can flip through those. Then we have a quick email note from the FBI Victim Services Advocate that I work closely with about our services. Juvenile Justice Note. Third page, you will see a name you might have seen on the news, that he wanted to come tonight. He's very, very broken, this guy, from this really horrible trauma that had occurred in our community. And I told him I couldn't have him come because my clients are in crisis right now because of this ordinance change. For fear of losing their horses, I have been up late nights having to talk people off of cliffs to make sure that they are okay because they are scared of what's going to happen if they lose their lifeline and their hope. There's other letters here. I think I have like 38 letters to demonstrate the counseling that does occur at our agency. And the next fact check that I want to go over, they're the blue sheets, by the way, for the fact checks. It was stated that the horses have gotten out of their pasture a minimum of six times and that they continue to get out. This was stated as a concern for all the neighbors in the neighborhood and as they are worried about property values and decreasing, I'm sorry, their property values decreasing due to damage that the horses may cause. They also stated that police officers have had to get them out of the road numerous times. In all actuality, our horses did get out on three occasions in April. They got out on April 16th, April 18th, and April 21st. On the 16th and 18th, I was in New England on vacation, visiting family after the death of one of my cousins. When I returned, you know, I had walked around the perimeter of the pasture with the police officers as my son had when I was gone, looking for how these horses got out. We figured it out, and we fixed it, and they have not gotten out since. Not only do we fix our solar panel electrical box, but we reinforced the problem by making sure that if the panel box went out again, we have a secondary gate that is there, so that way they cannot get out of that. And they haven't. And that was four months ago. So just to note that they are safe and secure. And that can be confirmed with Chief Doolin if necessary. That's the dates, you know, that I have gotten from him. Fact three was about the horse smell with the manure. We have somebody remove our horse manure once a week for sure. And then I go out there if I notice that they have some in a certain collection area. And I'm like, oh, that doesn't look so pretty. And I remove it in addition to the once a week. We have a lot of people out there, and we've never, ever, ever had any client's family members, referral sources ever mention a smell. In fact, we have people have, that have noticed that because the horse's manure doesn't have a rough smell, that they have asked me to collect it and keep it in piles so they could come and get it to use in their gardens because the cow manure and chicken manure and everything else does stink. So it's, it's something that, I have invited all of you to come out, and when I had sent all of this to you earlier. I don't know if any of you have come out when I've been out there. I haven't been able to meet with you, but I might have been busy, just to see for yourselves, to see if you noticed a smell. Other neighbors in the community next door I had spoken with, and that was not something that they had shared as a complaint, other than saying, well, I've smelled it like once when it was really hot. But otherwise, that has not been a complaint. And it never has been anything that anyone had communicated to me before. So one thing that a lot of people that have been out there have noticed was that when I've walked them around the perimeter to say like, okay, this is our problem, you know, am I just not smelling it? Is it just that we're used to it? Please come tell me if it's a certain spot that has smell. Because I wanted to fix the problem, I want to be a good neighbor. But even when I have stood people next to the horse manure piles where we collect them, they didn't even know the pile was there until I said, turn around, because they couldn't smell it. There are some letters behind that blue sheet to support those claims. The fourth fact check I'm going to go over is that the pasture was said to be only three-fourths of an acre, and that it was researched that the horses needed to be in at least two acres of pasture per horse with grass that is eight to 10 inches tall. I have been trained in working with horses, as you see with that certification. That's part of the training that I had was how to care for my four-legged team members. The horses are kept in a pasture that is just under an acre and a half. I don't know where three-fourths come from, but you have a map on here that shows the GIS actual calculations of our fence line. Many horses are kept in a barn and let out to a paddock area that is about 20 by 20. That's the typical practice. A lot of times, it's dirt, not even grass. And as long as they have hay to supplement, they can graze, but that's usually a treat. Our acreage that we have set up and the way our fence line was designed was per the recommendations of our vet, who is on our board of directors, talking to people at the Ag Center to get their recommendations regarding grass and erosion, and making sure that the horses had what they needed based on their disabilities. Safran is my paint, the brown and white horse you see in some of the pictures, and she has what's called navicular disease, which is arthritis in her front feet, which is why nobody wanted her anymore because she can't be ridden. So as you can see from the farrier note in this book somewhere, I pay between $150 to $300 every six weeks for her to have special shoes, which are like high heels. She's pretty sassy, and she has those for comfort to be able to get around the pasture, but she cannot run. If she were to have too big of a space, as a vet recommended, she may run and push herself beyond what she should have as far as exercise. The other horse has one eye. She also has severe stomach ulcers from previous trauma, and because of that, she is not encouraged to run. She can't be ridden because she has a history of physical abuse and neglect that I have medical records for before I had met her. So the space is designed specific for their needs. And I understand that, you know, in general, it's good for horses to have a lot of space. And if these horses were typical horses, I would agree with that. But these horses have special needs, and their needs are being met with the way that we have our pasture set up. One thing I also wanted to make sure that was noted was that when we set it up, we had set it up with preapproval, so of the current ordinance. Before I moved into Albemarle, I had checked to make sure not only that a counseling agency could be where this house was and modified into an agency, but that the horses could be kept. And I told the gentleman that if the horses could not be kept there, would they be allowed to be carted in? Because I had them located one spot, and I was willing to cart them in. Well, I was told the excellent news that they could be there to stay. So that's what we did. So I released that other place that we had them at and moved them there because they were allowed to be, according to the past ordinance. The previous place I had them located is now in use again, so I cannot move them back. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I did check on that. So the next couple of letters, the first one after that blue sheet is from our vet, Dr. Pike from Bear Creek Veterinary Services. She could not be here tonight because she's on call, but she wanted to make sure that her words and things were in here to show that the horses get the most optimal veterinary care there is. And we also have some other people that have mentioned things about the horse's care. I have a map of the neighborhood to show where our pasture is next after all that, before the next blue sheet, and where the people live that have formulated complaints against the horses. One of which, Mr. Lambert lives right there next to our pasture. Then there's another gentleman, Mr. Runyon, that lives way up the hill, about half a mile away when you go MapQuest. And their green circles are people that I have talked to that are in approval of our horses staying and didn't mind signing permission that they're good with it, they didn't have a problem with the horses being there. Other people that aren't circled on that map either said that they did not want to get involved because they didn't want that kind of drama, or they weren't home. And then you'll see a copy of our petition and the mileage. I told you about MapQuest, about seeing where everything is. I included some horse ordinance and notable comments of nearby municipalities, just in case you had questions about that. A lot of people speak about cattle and pigs and chickens because of the smell. There's not as much talk about horses, other than the need for grass if they are not supplemented with hay and feed. So that's what you'll find there. Two more quick fact checks, and I'll be out of your way. The next one was about our metal shed. It was said that our metal shed has a low roof, which is not appropriate for horses, and that it gets too hot in the summer for horses to be in, yet they are kept in it a lot. Well, in fact, when Albemarle Police Department had responded to the calls when the horses got out in April, they became familiar with our horses and our equine assisted therapy programs. Two of the officers were so moved by the horses and what we do with the horses, with our programs, that they asked if they could help us with anything at our facility in regards, regards to the horses. So off duty, these two officers came and helped us to modify what was a chicken coop by removing one wall off the front of the chicken coop so the horses could go in and out as they pleased. Prior to this, they had the shelter of trees at one part of our pasture, but they did not have an organized shelter because according to the ordinance, we were told we were not able to put up a barn or a stable. So we wanted to make sure we were doing everything correctly. But I wanted them to have something to go under, so this is just a walk under space. It doesn't qualify as a stall or a barn. It's a structure that was already there that was just opened up for them. You can see a picture of Safran, which is our tallest of the two horses, inside that space, and she has lots of clear room, and they both fit in there very well. And if you peek, there's even more hay in there, so they get lots of hay. The last fact check I want to mention was about the horses being abused. Out of all of this, I think that was the hardest thing for me to hear when I watched the videos, because it was very irresponsible, insulting, ignorant, and uninformed to suggest that these horses have ever been abused by me or anyone that works with me. I would not have it. I am an animal advocate, I'm an animal lover, just as much as I am an advocate for victims and other people that need mental health services. They're provided so much attention, and they are cared for. I've already mentioned some of these points by the vet, the farrier. As far as the vet goes, we have the endoscopic exams that Sage gets every, like, twice a year to make sure of the stomach ulcers. And if she has to have medication for that, then we have to give the medication. She has to have special feed because she's a cribber, so she also can't have certain kinds of fencing because she's a cribber, which is all reasons that no rescue will take her. I've called. I was trying to get a plan B because I can't have my horses put down. I called every rescue I could find, and they will not take her because of her being a cribber. Safran, with her navicular, I mentioned it costs about $150 to $300 every six weeks. The weather, when it gets cold, those of you who may have some joint issues know that it hurts more when it gets cold. So she has to have a little bit higher level shoes, so it costs more money. They have to come a little bit more often, so it costs about $300 versus $150. For the eye removal, that cost me about $5,800 because we fought it. We fought around the clock for, it started at two, every two hours that we had to administer medication for about a week, and then it went to every one hour, this is nighttime, too, that we're going out there to do this care. And then it got to the point where even that wasn't good enough, that she was starting to look colicky. So we had to have her go to Bear Creek Vet, and she stayed there for a month, went to Waxaw to see an eye specialist for horses, and eventually after fighting, they said they had to remove the eye. We did this without blinking, without a second thought, without hesitation. We found the funds to do it because we love them. You'll see pictures of the horses next. You'll see there's no ribs showing. Despite the fact that the grass isn't eight to 10 inches tall in the pasture that they keep, they are fed and they eat very well. They are very healthy. You can see some children feeding the horses. That's part of what they do as far as a nurturing activity and to gain trust. It's kind of scary when you're itty-bitty to go up to a huge animal. This is one way that they find to build that trust. And then you can see their feet, that their feet are constantly kept manicured and cared for. There's more letters behind there about the allegations of abuse and how that has particularly offended some of the people that are in the community that know the programs. Most of these are referral sources that you will see and are farrier and volunteers that are in our programs. I want to close by starting on the front of the book. I started on the back, but on the front of the book is a picture, a human trafficking victim had John for me for Christmas. And on it, it says, "Even with missing an eye, she still sees me better than anyone else." And that's Sage. These horses are miracle workers, and without them, I can't do as effective work as I'm doing for these real vulnerable populations. And I'm not a fighter typically. If I had the money, I would just say, oh, you don't want us here? I'll just pick up and I'll move us to somewhere else. That can still serve the people. But most of what I do is for free. Most of what I do is Medicaid funded, if it's not for free. And I don't have any other means. I think I have $200 in my account right now. I can't just pick up and move. I need to have you all revisit this ordinance now that you have all the information. And I'm sorry that not all your friends on Facebook to have noticed that there was going to be a talk about this ordinance change. And I don't check the city council website. I didn't know I should have. I didn't know I should have. But, from what I have heard, y'all didn't really know what I did either. And I have two Facebook pages on my work. I have a website, I've been in the newspaper twice, and I've been on the news numerous times for different things that we do. So, I hope that you'll take a chance and listen to what I say, because I'm speaking for a lot of people, and my horses. It's not about me, which is why it's so hard to be up here right now. That's all I have. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Number one, I'll clarify a few statistics here.
Yes, sir.
Or what you have. You rent your property from Mr. Almond. Do you rent all of his property?
No, sir.
So, you rent just the one piece? Or you, there's like three different pieces of property there?
Right, I have about access to almost two acres of land.
Okay, so you're answering one and part of another one, then?
Yes, part of it's covered with more trees, where the horses couldn't get into that depth of the trees, so that's why we don't have that.
But, you're still renting that property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you have that piece of property, you just don't have pasture land there?
Right, right.
And second, you have two horses on the property now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, have any questions?
Do you actually reside at the property?
No, sir. I live in Albemarle. Nobody resides there. It's the horses. On the weekends, I come out about twice a day to feed and check on them. If I can't, because I'm, you know, on vacation or off and about, I have volunteers, I have family that does that for me.
Does somebody live in the house?
No, sir.
So, nobody's in that house at all?
No, sir.
Brother? Mr. Runyon?
I got interested in this.
Yes.
So, I went out and looked over everything, rode up and down the streets and that sort of thing. I grew up on a farm.
Yes.
And I'll be honest with you, I don't see how you can have two horses there that are pooping and not have that smell somewhere.
Because we remove it. We remove it.
Now, the other thing is, I went to your website.
Yes.
And then, I'm looking at this brochure in the front of this thing, there's no information in there as to where you are.
On the website?
The only address in your website is a Baden address.
Oh, the P.O. Box. Yes, sir. We have a lot of high-profile, yes, sir, we have a lot of high-profile victims that have national recognition, and we do our best to try to protect privacy as best we can. We actually, before moving to Albemarle, didn't even have a sign up at our facility because we wanted to protect that privacy. However, we were forced to put a sign up by Cardinal, that was a new rule that Cardinal Innovations had said that we had to do, so, it's the only reason we even have a sign.
So, you've only been in Albemarle a year?
In Albemarle, just over a year, yes, sir.
Where were you before that?
In New London. Yeah. But, we were too far out, where people couldn't come to the services for the horses.
I didn't think it was confusing.
You're fine, you're fine.
I see this, you had forty, forty clients, I believe?
Thirty-six.
But, I counted, you have fourteen staff members.
Yes. That's not my thirty-six, that's my thirty-six clients. I have staff members that see other clients.
And they're seeing those clients in that one building?
Yes, sir.
You have fourteen staff members, and yourself, seeing clients in that one building out on West Main?
Yes, and our Concord office, and Holmes', and the Esther House Shelter, and the schools, and other facilities. Obviously, I can't bring the horses with me, so anyone coming for the equine therapy comes there. But, I'm the one who is the one certified in that program. Sometimes, other therapists join me, in that if they have clients of their own that want some services with the horses, I just quoted mine, because I'm the only one who's certified in this model. So, I have to be there and present with theirs, and that's not consistent. It's not like a weekly appointment, it's just like, hey, we're stuck on this issue, they don't understand why they need to quit using drugs, can you do an equine session? And then, they see Sage cribbing, and doing a very maladaptive behavior for anxiety, and we have a teaching moment, and I break through. So, their clients see the horses as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions, Council?
On average, Dr. Harbison, how many hours a day are your clients being in with the horses, or interacting with the horses?
For my clients, it's an average of four hours a day.
So, four hours every day on West Main Street, you have people out there with the horses?
Yes, sir, not Saturday and Sunday. But, we do have some people on Saturday and Sunday that are, some of our adult clients, that come for some self-care, that might chill out at our picnic table to observe the horses and things like that, when they're feeling hard, like they're having a hard day.
I'll be the first to admit that I had no idea what was being done in that facility. But, I can tell you now that I have much more respect for that operation, now that you presented this information. It's good to know that we got a service like that in Albemarle.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I do know what goes on out there, because of what you've done over the years, okay? I did not realize the number of folks that were in and out of that facility. I didn't know, I didn't know what you do. Just for these folks up here, okay? A lot of times, we use acronyms a whole lot.
Yes.
You are funded as a 501(c) since August of 15.
Yes.
Isn't that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And JCP, do you get funds from?
The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
A lot of different places, you mentioned a JCPC. I know what that is, but a lot of folks up here might not know what that is. Is that one of your major funders?
Not one of our major funders, no. But, it's a program that we offer to kids that are in our court system, and their parents, and their grandparents, and their siblings. Right, so, it's a specialized program that we have.
JCPC?
JCPC, yes, sir.
Find out what that is.
It's the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and it's a community group of individuals that assign dollars to try to help the kids and the families that are at risk. And, we serve a number of clients from them, plus their family members, and it's highly beneficial. And it's not just for those that are in the court system, it's also for kids that have had lots of suspensions, that are kind of getting towards the court system, to try to prevent that. So, it's either-or. So, either the judge orders it, or the schools might refer, Department of Social Services might refer, but we've gotten so many referrals for that program, because we have like a before-and-after assessments, and it's showing extreme success, that a whole lot more people are wanting that program. We're the only therapeutic program right now that is funded by the Juvenile Crime Council.
Further questions?
I would just like to say that I know this took a lot of time and effort, and very appreciative of what's in here. As to Councilman Dexter Townsend, you don't know until you can see this information, so, thank you for your effort and work on that.
I have a lot of people counting on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have another unannounced delegation. Mr. Jim Runyon, 2604 Oakland Court, to speak against allowing horses in the City of Leominnes.
Mayor, council members, if anybody says that you all don't work hard, you can send them to me, and I'll take and set them straight, especially after the last two, or shall we say, the first two presentations that we set through. We have a group from the neighborhood, and I'm going to just ask them to kind of raise their hands. Y'all raise your hands. These are people that have a stake in the neighborhood where we live. And I venture to guess that most of us live in a neighborhood. And what is a neighborhood? Well, it's a diversified set of families, who have many and varied interests, but there is one thread that runs true amongst all these individuals, that makes them a neighborhood. And that is the thread that they want to enjoy, both the inside and the outside of their house, that they have worked very hard for, and they have put much interest of labor, finances, and, shall we say, part of themselves into that house. And that's the reason why they are staying in the neighborhood, to be perfectly honest with you. The neighborhood is made up of people who are members of this community. They are residents of Albemarle, and they pay taxes. And, they have a common interest, again, of taking and enjoying their neighborhood. And I'm glad that somebody said I lived about a half a mile away, because when I walk, it's about a half a mile total from my house down to the cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac is one of the problems, and not only have I noticed, but several other people who do walking in the neighborhood, that there is a heavy stench of manure, especially in the summertime, when the weather is hot, and there is a lot of humidity. And that emanates over into the cul-de-sac. It also is a problem for a neighbor who has a house right next to where the horses are pastured. So, we see that we have, again, a situation whereby if you have large animals, you're going to have problems where you have people and/or a corporate city lemons. Now, in addition to the problems that we see with the stench, and I'm going to try not to cover too much, I'll be as brief as I possibly can, because I know we went over this before, we have a situation where you also have an additional amount of flies. And I have talked to neighbors, and I have been at a party where there has been dinner and food served, and compared to where we are versus where they are, the heavy infestation of flies is not something that you would like to have when you are entertaining people, especially knowing where the flies may have landed with the droppings of the horses, and then back over to people and food. And I'm sure the Health Department would not be very happy with a situation like that. I do have one other situation that I want to take and bring to you here, before we talk a little bit about individuals and what has been going on in the neighborhood. And that is that we have been told that there has not been any horses out since April, and that it has not been as many times as it could be. There is a report from the Communications Center, and I have that here if you care to look at it. And this report gives you the times that the police were called to come over to that area to take care of horses, from 1/7/2019 until 5/3/2019, which if you'll note, that's past the April deadline, that she said they didn't get out. There have been a total of seven calls to the Police Department. And I am sure that if you would like to see this, I can pass it around, or if you know about the Communications Center, you know that they take and have a record of each and every call that goes into the Police Department, and what it has to do with. So, we have a situation now where we have smell, we have horses that are loose, which is a safety problem. We have an individual who, she was talking about something that was in her brochure, which is a page that she passed around the neighborhood. Now, we've had a pretty quiet neighborhood, we've gotten along fairly well, and I don't think you've heard of too many problems coming out of the subdivision over there. And now, all of a sudden, we got an interloper coming in, passing around a paper, trying to get and pit neighbor against neighbor. Well, that wasn't enough. Yesterday, they bring in an outsider, which is a television reporter, and in my estimate, and in the estimate of the neighborhood, here we have another outsider trying to take and intimidate, and/or kind of slowly slide a different picture around as to what is going on. Now, I do have a problem when outsiders come in and try to take and explain what we should do, not only to the neighborhood, but also the city and the city council, and especially when it is aired out in public on a television show. The last item that I'm going to try to cover before I get to everything else, is that we do see a situation where ordinance 81.02, and if you've been down in that area, you can take a look at the house, and you can take a look at where the horses are kept. And one part of this says that "Horses shall not be located in a pen or other enclosure or stable closer than 200 feet from a place of human habitation." And, brother, let me tell you what, if you all saw part of that TV, or you go out there, you'll know that the pens and the enclosures are closer than 200 feet. Now, we don't have a problem with what she is trying to do. The biggest problem is where she is doing it. And there should not be any problem that we see within a city where you have large animals and people cohabiting next to each other. There are going to be problems. There are situations to where I am sure that if you had a cow or a horse next to your house, and the hot heat came on, that I doubt very seriously if you would be out enjoying your patio, and also, let's say, having any friends over. So, with that, we covered a lot of this last week. I'm not going to take up too much of your time, except to say that although the word was, there's not too many people that are complaining, we have a group of neighbors, and several of those neighbors have seen what I've seen, and they are complaining. And what we are asking is no more, no less than what we would expect from you all to do for other neighborhoods, which is to prevent something from occurring which encroaches on your well-being, your happiness, and the amount of money that you have put into your house, especially if you're hoping to see some kind of advantage where that amount of money will increase over time. And this does impact that, and it will impact it if it keeps on going. I'd like to thank you for your time today, and hopefully, we won't keep you too much later. I know you've got several other agenda items on there, and thanks again for your attention.
Thank you. Before we move into unannounced delegations, and I have quite a few of those, one of the things that has been requested that we do was revisit, and the second had to do with grandfathering. I've asked our city attorney to do some research on grandfathering, and David, I need you to come up and explain to council what can and can't be done as far as grandfathering.
Mayor, what we've usually faced on grandfathering, and I can give you an example that may point the way. We had a situation out on Highway 2427 near Belks, where there was, lack of a better word, an auto junkyard. I think you were actually involved with it, with this at the time when you were police chief. And, it had been there prior to the enactment of our ordinance, it regulated that, that area as far as zoning.
Referring to what used to be on 740?
Now, this was on 2427, sort of across from where the service station is there. There was a gentleman there that had a yard, had a lot of stored vehicles.
Oh, you're talking about Anderson Heights?
Right.
Got you, okay.
And, the question was, was he grandfathered in? And the answer was, and we went to court on that particular issue, is that if he was there and operating that facility at the time that the ordinance was passed, he was allowed to continue to do that, as long as he did not increase the use, or didn't alter or change the use. And, what had happened there is, we felt like that there was a change of use. That is to say, he had vehicles that had come onto that site many years after, you know, the ordinance was enacted. So, generally speaking, the rule is that if it was there at the time of the enactment of the ordinance- of the ordinance, it would continue. But if it's altered, changed, more horses brought in, you know, whatever it may be, or they switched and start having cows come in or something like that, then, yes, it would violate the ordinance. But if this facility, I'm not sure, I listened to the presentation, and I'm assuming that she was there prior to the enactment of this ordinance that you're speaking about. And generally speaking, she is allowed to continue to do that. Now, you may have other issues there besides just the zoning issue of whether she continued to operate that type of facility. You could have some nuisance problems, such as smell, things of that nature, public safety issues, you know, things like that. And Kevin probably have to address those. But generally speaking, to answer your question is if she was there at the time the city enacted an ordinance and nothing changed, she was operating the same type of organization and whatnot, she would be allowed to continue that.
Counsel, have any questions or attorney?
Well, you can when you try to do, and there are retroactive ordinances, and there are retroactive statutes and federal laws. As you know, taxation laws sometimes are retroactive and things of that nature. And you can get into constitutional concerns with that. So you just have to keep that in the back of your mind if you make it retroactive like that, that you could get a constitutional challenge on it, that's all. But there are things just like when they change the tax codes and things of that nature, those are retroactive, you know, oftentimes.
Counsel, have any questions or attorney?
I mean, moving forward, this would be great information to have had, you know, several, several meetings ago, you know. I think that's, I think, because we're not, we're not law experts. We're not, you know, we're not attorneys by trade. I don't know the ins and outs. And, you know, I'll say this to say that, you know, Dr. Harbison, I think you do a phenomenal job. I mean, I can tell you right now, I think that the services you provide is, you can't put a price tag on it. And the lives you touch, the lives you change is very, is very, is an awesome thing. I also know, though, that we have a group of neighbors that they're, to these people's point, to Mr. Runyon's point, they pay property tax, they live there. So again, anything that we've talked about, in my opinion, has not necessarily been about 2620 West Main Street. It's been about any, any area in the city that where people could come in and do this. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, it's a...
And there can be disagreement on the facts also. I know in the case that I mentioned that the mayor and I were involved in when he was police chief, we had evidence that a lot of those vehicles weren't even made till after the ordinance was enacted, and the judge still ruled against us on that. So there's other issues that can probably be, it's a weighing of the facts, really, the equities and whatnot. And yes, you can make things retroactive, that is true. And you just have to weigh the facts, weigh the equities, and try to balance all the various interests. It's a tough job. It's tough to do that.
It's quite a shock to me. It's not retroactive when you pass an ordinance and it is in effect from that point on.
Correct.
There's no retroactive there.
I don't know, I don't recall that, because that presentation was, was fairly timely. I'm assuming, I don't remember whether it was retroactive or not, quite frankly.
I'm a strong believer in degrees of freedom, the concept of degrees of freedom that one has in his life. And for sure, my degrees of freedom get less and less as the population increases. And my freedom ends where yours starts and vice versa. Now, if, if, if we could be assured that there would not be, that there are no intrusions on the part of these animals and so forth in that neighborhood, then I would say, no sweat. You're not infringing on anybody else's freedom. But when you have odors and you have animals that escape and go around, you do have an infringement on somebody else's freedom.
It's a weighing of the interest of the various parties, most certainly.
And I think that's getting a little bit of what Bill was talking about. We've got those situations all over the city, and we've got to protect both of them insofar as we can. But I'm still puzzled by this concept that when we pass an ordinance, it doesn't take effect across the city.
No, it takes across, it takes effect across the city. That's not what was it?
David, we never, ever, that I remember, say, this is an ordinance. We're passing this ordinance, but it only applies to this group and not that group.
Well, no, that's not the case. What we're talking about is if you look at some of your ordinances you've enacted, it'll say at the very bottom, you know what I'm talking about, that it'll say enacted, and it's enacted into law at passage. We used to do two readings, now it's just one reading. And that, it becomes the law from that point forward. And that's what I'm addressing, the mayor asked me to address. If what was going on was legal before the ordinance was enacted, would she be grandfathered in? She could, but you could have other issues here. And I don't know, did you make, did you make that ordinance retroactive? I don't recall.
I asked about it. My version is not to be grandfathered.
Right.
That's why I asked if it was.
Right. I don't recall what was retroactive or not, Mr. Bramlett. But then you have other issues there, too, that Kevin regulates. As we know about nuisances, you know, we have various nuisances throughout. It could be pests and insects and things like that are nuisances. It could be things of the nature that smells can be nuisances. You could have noise ordinance violations if somebody was out there playing loud. You know, that sort of thing. So you sort of have to weigh all this and see if there's any way to regulate it in such fashion that all parties can be protected. And I don't know, this is a difficult question because you've got the animals there that do good work, you know, with therapy and whatnot at the same time. And if I, you know, was there like these other people, I'd be concerned about the smell and all that, too, you know, and property values and things of that nature.
Follow up?
Sure.
So I have opened up the minutes from August 5th. And I don't see in front of me, I don't remember from that meeting and don't see in front of me any verbiage as it relates to grandfather. I don't remember even discussing the issue of grandfather.
He asked, I remember.
He asked. I do not see it in the minutes, okay? And I, and I may have missed it because I'm just now perusing them. To that end, I don't see anything in the minutes. And y'all, correct me if I'm wrong, where we talked about being retroactive, okay? I don't see that in here.
I don't see it either.
So, and I'm just, as the discussion is going on tonight, I am glad we've gotten the answer, but yes or no, okay? Is this a grandfather in?
If your ordinance was enacted and was prospective.
Right.
You know, in other words, it was enacted that day and moved forward from that date, then I think the activity going on on this property, if it was legal and in compliance with the ordinances and the plan zoning, you know, at that time, would be allowed to continue. Unless, of course, as we mentioned a minute ago, there's other violations that are occurring, such as nuisances and things like that.
Right. I'm just looking at what we approved, okay? What is the, is the legal report of a meeting? And I don't see that in there, again.
And just to add to that point, Mayor Protim, to what Mr. Beaver's saying, you know, I can't speak for everybody in this room, but I can only tell you what I feel. I think it's, it's an awesome service, I really do. But I also know that what you just said about, a lot of this has to go on complaints. A lot of it's complaint-driven, a lot of it's nuisance-driven.
Right.
And that's what we also have to consider. We've got a whole room full of people in the neighborhood that, that, you know, that are affected by this, you know.
The activity itself could be allowable if it was prospective. But if the byproduct is, is throwing off other violations of the ordinance, such as, you know, nuisance, such as smell or fly, you know, that sort of thing, then it may be halted maybe under those type of circumstances unless it's correctable. If it could be corrected where there wouldn't be a smell, and I don't know enough about, you know, the control of the manure out there and all that kind of thing to really be able to say that.
Mr. Beaver, I want to ask a question. I'm just trying to figure out how can we get ourselves in a situation where we can pick and choose whether or not something should be grandfathered or not? Use as an example, about eight years ago, the city didn't have a requirement for subdivisions to have sidewalks. And then we made that a requirement, but we didn't go back and make subdivisions edge sidewalks, you know, that was already pre-existing. So how can we pick and choose?
Well, generally speaking, I don't favor retroactive ordinances.
Right, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't favor them. I think you get into a real sticky wicket when you do that, you know. Because a good example, you say, Councilman Bramlett, you know, he operates a jewelry store along with his brother-in-law. And if we enacted an ordinance, all of a sudden they said, we're going to ban jewelry stores in downtown Albemarle, you'd be a little upset if we told you it was going to be retroactive. You had to stop and move. So that's the reason why you have it, is so that they, the person could not have reasonably known when they engaged in that activity that we were coming along later on, either a year, two years, three years, whatever, and act north and made whatever they were doing illegal, you know. Unless, so that's why they're grandfathered in and any subsequent person. Now, there could be other violations like we talked about as far as nuisances and things like that that might prohibit the activity.
Well, and I think that's what led us to this point. I mean, I think the horses escaping, I think the smell, the odor, you know, things of that nature. I think that's what's led us back to this conversation.
Yeah.
So where do we go from here?
Yeah.
It's a tough issue, you know, and you may want to take some time on it and deliberate and you sort of weigh the equities and sort of balance the interests of everybody and see if you can come to some kind of conclusions you feel like would be fair and equitable to everyone, you know.
Mr. Robinson, when the doctor had indicated that she had met with city planning whenever she got ready to open up that facility, was that prior to you?
No, we did speak with her. And I believe we determined the number of horses at that time were allowed.
So your staff met?
We discussed the barns and the issues, possible issues and proximity and that. So that might have been a maybe issue.
I go back to, go ahead. I just go back to the public hearing. It was open to a discussion when it was closed. One thing that I know I kept talking about or wanting folks to address or to think about was that we were not looking at one specific area when we're talking about any of the animals. I mean, horses, cows, pigs, chickens, anything. We were not talking about one specific area. We were talking about developing an ordinance that was 30,000 feet up for the entire city and all of the miles within our city limits.
That's correct.
Okay, so that was the ordinance.
It wasn't just for this specific case, it was...
No, that's right. It was an ordinance that was, that was capturing the entire city.
That's correct.
We made, we made mention that night, and this council has in many times gone back and looked at an ordinance because of complaints. There, you know, how do you police an ordinance? They're complaint-driven, not just animals, anything. It's all complaint-driven, okay? So we passed an ordinance a month ago after a public hearing that was completely across dealing with every, every acre, every property in Albemarle. And then we get to tonight, and all of the public, all of the social media stuff and all the stuff that's gone on, okay, to get here, and all the miscommunication. Because I don't remember the word grandfather. I do not remember it. I do not see it in front of me, okay? And I said to the mayor, what does David say about this? So that's the reason, I mean, we got to figure that out, okay?
You know, generally speaking, when you, generally, most statutes are prospective. You know, they're not...
From here, it's a problem.
And, but what you could have here is at the time she applied, I guess, with Kevin and moved forward and whatnot, it was allowable. And now, maybe, it's not, not allowable unless she complies with certain other things. But there could be other things going on, such as there's other parts of the ordinance, not that particular ordinance, but we got nuisance ordinances, we got this, that, and the other. And there may lie the problem, that is to say, the neighborhood maybe doesn't care so much that she's, the activity she's doing, which they may feel is a good activity and very worthwhile. But it's just the byproduct of that is, they feel like it diminishes their property values and it destroys the enjoyability of their homes and things like that.
But those are, those are two different things. You're talking about zoning on one hand and nuisance ordinances on the other.
Yeah, but they all act together, right, they all act together.
They do, but that's two separate issues.
What about when we do something like that, if we know there would have to be changes like that? What if we put a section in there that gave a certain period of time to comply with your ordinance?
You have some of those, you have some of these in that way.
That's correct.
When you talk about service, service, the service that is performed at that piece of property, like you said, you cannot put a price tag on it.
Life-changing.
It is, it is. So if the service is great, then we get the byproduct of, and I think that's where we are right now.
Do we have any idea that there is any other situation in this city where with the new ordinance in, that somebody's going to have to get rid of horses?
I can think of at least two other ones right now that could come into play. I'd have to go look at the property, see how much acreage they got. And I would say that there's probably two that that's going to happen.
With multiple horses?
Yes.
Because of the acreage.
Well, what, what would you think about giving a certain period of time to comply? Because we're between two extremes here. We've got this group, we've got that group, we got to, we got to deal with that. And somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose, that sort of thing. But how do we make that as easy on the loser as we possibly can?
Well, you know... David, what you're sitting there saying, how does that even apply? I mean, from what you're saying, they're telling us, based on the previous court case, you're basically telling us that this has to be grandfathered.
Well, I think she went to, I think she went through the process, if I'm not mistaken, and it was where she went into, into operating a business, it was okay then.
Right.
And so now you come along later on and you go, no, it's not okay. And of course, money's been expended and things have been done to put her in play, you know, in her business there. However, at the same time, as a byproduct of what she has engaged in there, there are things going on, such as the smell and flies and all that, that are impacting the neighbors, and they have legitimate concern about protecting their property values also. I don't know what could be worked out. We'd have to sit down and probably knock heads with Kevin here or something and see if anything could be worked out, I don't know.
Well, but aside from, aside from the nuisance piece of it, just looking at zoning, compliance with the zoning part of it, what you're telling me based on court cases is it's allowed.
And we have to figure it out.
Well, I don't think we have to, based on what he said, by law.
The best example I give you is, you're sitting there minding your own business, you're operating something, it is allowable, and you're doing it. Then somebody comes along a year later, two years later, three years later, whatever, and says, no, it is not allowable. You know, generally speaking, the courts have allowed it to continue as long as they're otherwise compliant with all the other laws and everything. We went on this case I mentioned that Mr. Mayor Michael and I were involved in. The judge didn't see it that way. And he actually ruled against, I think Mr. Sasser was here when that was...
I think we could probably work out the nuisance part as far as, well, improving the situation. And I can't speak for the doctor, but I think if she knew that her neighbors or so might have an issue with the smell, she had the horse poop picked up on Tuesdays now, she might even possibly add a day, you know, I don't know. You know, maybe on Friday, Tuesdays and Fridays, you know. Maybe that might help us.
Like trash picking up there.
Maybe we can somewhat...
Those nuisance issues would still be, they would still be there.
Right, it might help the situation, you know.
Listen, I...
I throw something out there.
I love that. I mean, I love the service so much that I have even tried to find another spot in town, not necessarily in the city limits, okay? Where there have been horses at other times. I mean, I even reached out, not within the city limits, but just a little bit out of the city limits and have not been, that's not been good. I mean, I haven't had a good response there, but...
You could say you have a situation, you have a piece of vacant land, and you can make pretty much whatever use you want to it, whatever area that you're zoning. And all of a sudden, you start having people dump chicken over there. I don't know what chicken, it gets real hot. It's not that the activity is violating zoning laws necessarily, but it's causing other problems, the smell and everything.
It's violating a nuisance for us.
Well, it's, anyway you look at it, it's a difficult situation.
Yes, it is.
I mean, you've got, you've got, you've got an organization that provides great service, but you also have a neighborhood of people who have paid good money for their property. And if any... a neighborhood of people who have paid good money for their property, and if any event that one of these neighbors wanted to sell their property, somebody comes out there, I mean, is it going to have a negative effect on the amount of, on the dollar amount of what they could sell the house for?
I don't know if it's in a compromised position or not. I don't know whether getting together with Kevin and getting a representative, seeing if anything can be worked out, you know, try to balance all these various interests, you know, and whatnot, and maybe it's possible you could do that, you know. The business would be grandfathered in, but there'd be certain things that need to be, that need to be compliance with in order to not generate the smell or the fly and that sort of thing.
So what do we do tonight?
I don't care one way or the other, how y'all go with this, I really don't, I don't know enough about horses. I said that from the beginning. I would just make sure, I think it'd be beneficial to listen to the video, watch the video and see what we said, just so y'all are operating on the right frequencies. I was kind of asking, told this harvest, she had moved on her horses, and we thought it was grandfathered in.
Well, you did ask the question, I remember that, you know, we were so confused that night.
Yeah, I would have said it, that was y'all's wish.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we should watch, as Kevin says, maybe we need to watch, to verify.
Counsel, one of the other topics in our ordinance talks about being in compliance with the county health department. So that's avenue of the nuisance part we can pursue if we have that problem, if they can't resolve that issue.
So what do we do now?
Well, counsel has to make a decision, but I think Mr. Bieber's pretty much told you, but I've got a whole list of people that want to speak yet, so I want to make sure before we do anything, I give them their opportunity.
Because we voted last time seven to zero to change the ordinance. I mean, we voted last time seven to zero to change the ordinance.
Exactly. And if counsel wants to, well, it's not matter changing the ordinance, you're saying now whether they're grandfathered or not. The ordinance doesn't have to be changed.
But is that our decision?
Well, that's what you need to decide. And I've probably got another 15 people here who want to speak.
But if David is saying.
Is it possible to grandfather them in when you've got a whole neighborhood of complaints?
Well, according to Mr. Bieber, you do, because that's what the law says.
Yeah.
Mr. Bieber, I'm sorry, but will you come back up? I'm just, I would, it's too important to be able to not have here at all.
Hang on a minute.
I didn't say.
Kevin probably has a better revelation than I do. I recall, I thought I recalled the ordinance was enacted. I'd have to look at the ordinance again, and you look down toward the end of it, and it says the effective date of the ordinance, you know, when it goes into effect. Now, she came along, what, a year or two earlier, and at the time she came along, whatever ordinance was in place then, she went through the steps and procedures and whatnot, and it was allowable. And now they pass an ordinance, so that would normally apply to things moving forward, not going back and wiping out everything that, you know, everybody was doing before then. Like I said, I mean, if you follow that logic, if you think about that logic a minute, you could say, and I'm sort of being facetious to make the point, jewelry stores are banned in the downtown Albemarle between Third Street and this and all that, retroactive, and then they go down to shut down Star &amp; Jewelry, you know, that's what I'm saying, that would seem patently unfair to you all, because you had been in full compliance up to that point. You normally would make it prospective. That's what I thought we did, but maybe we didn't, I don't know.
So may I, so yes or no, like the jury, yes or no? Based on what you know right now, is it, do we have to grandfather the, do we have to, based on court cases that we have been involved in 20 years ago, is that something we need to do? Or, and I will give you an out, okay, yes or no, or is it something that we do need to go back and look at and stop that video and look at?
I don't think you'd ever first go back on something this big, because you've got a number of people wanting to speak.
Oh, yeah, lots of people.
It's not going to, I mean, whether you decide tonight or you decide the 16th, or you decide the first meeting in October, you know, sooner or later, you just have to make a decision. But what I'm trying to say is, on just the narrow issue, was she in compliance, and then they passed a prospective ordinance, could she continue with what she was doing? Yes, as long as she doesn't violate other ordinances, such as nuisance ordinances and things of that nature. And I think what the complaints are really from the neighbors is more, not so much the activity she's carrying on, she's not, you know, it's not a situation like we had down in the heart of Albemarle or something like that. It is a situation where there's a smell emanating from there and flies and pests emanating from there. And I think that's what their real concern is, if they could eliminate that, I don't think they really, and I may be, I'm not trying to speak for them, you know, I'll let them speak for themselves, you know. So to answer your question, if you go back and look at the video and you look at the ordinance that was signed and enacted, if it doesn't say it was retroactive, and I don't think it did, but maybe it did, I don't know, I don't recall it saying that. I think it was prospective, because we addressed, this wasn't the only issue we were addressing. We were addressing rabbits and pot-billing pigs and this, that, and the other, you know, and everything, so.
Kevin, it did not say in the ordinance any, were retrospective, did it?
I don't think the ordinance says it's allowed.
No, it doesn't say it.
There's a discussion of motion with BMA.
Yeah, I think it was discussed, yes, I think it was.
And that's whatever your legal counsel says.
Can you believe I've been quiet this long?
No.
I've been quiet because I didn't have, in my mind, an answer for both of these groups. The only one that I see as a viable one is for us to bring our city limits on in so that the county could deal with it.
Sorry, Shirley, we can't do that.
Let's change the neighborhood.
Mr. Bieber, council has approved the minutes. Can they be amended at this point, if you see that we do have something there?
Yeah, I think we'd have to go back and revisit it, yeah. I think we would have to go back and revisit it. I don't recall, I think Kevin is right, I think there was some discussion about it. I don't recall there being any specific vote by the council that it would be retroactive, that it was basically being acted, because we were covering a number of different things, that mean not just the horses, you know, there's a lot of other things.
I don't recall any motion saying it'd be retrospective.
I agree, I don't recall that either.
Counsel, how do you wish to proceed with all the people here to speak? You want to let all of them come up before you make, talk anymore about it? Okay. David, you can sit down, I've got quite a few here. And if you do not want to speak, just tell me that when I call your name. Shawna Tarleton.
I think Dexter will say something.
No. I'll send a legal motion.
Hi, my name's Shawna Tarleton. I am one of the interns that work for Dr. Harbison. I do not reside in Stanley County. I reside in Richmond County. As a mess.
Go ahead, give me your address, please, while you're there.
It's 104 Wildale Road in East Rockingham, North Carolina. When I decided to pursue an internship, I had multiple places I could go. I interviewed with Dr. Harbison. I found out she did equine therapy, and she did trauma. I am a former trauma victim myself, and I know the importance of having animals. I also have a 12-year-old daughter who has suffered trauma. In Richmond County, we do not have any equine therapy. Unfortunately, I cannot bring my daughter to see her because her insurance can't be covered here. But I do work with the stable relationships. I deal with, what, seven of the juvenile justice kids right now. I individually see them. I have one child who means the world to me. I have written multiple letters to his court asking them not to put him away. When that child comes for our group every Tuesday evening, the way he changes when he's around those horses would touch anybody. This child has been told by his own father that he wants him removed from his home. I had to write a letter saying I disagreed with that. But when that kid comes, he lights up. He is, has a lot of issues going on at home. And it's not just him that I see. I have had clients, because like Dr. Harbison, I see at least 20 clients a week, because my internship is my job now. I have a lot of children who come to the center, but recently, with them all starting back to school, and they go to the city schools here in Albemarle, they are upset they can't come to see the horses. And then with me promising them at holiday times, they can come back to the center to see these horses and for them to find out, because it's very public what's going on, that these horses may be taken away devastates these children. Because I'm dealing with, like Dr. Harbison, a lot of trauma victims, so these horses, just being near them, not even having to touch them, almost every kid I have during their session will want to go outside and at least stand beside the fence. They understand I cannot let them touch the horses unless I have someone else with us for safety reasons, but for them to just be there and see those horses, it changes their whole perspective. I've had, the first child I talked about, his mom said he never opened up to a therapist. He didn't want anything to do with therapy. Now he is excited to come to therapy, and it's because he gets to see the horses, and those are ways that calm him. These horses have helped me with my own anxiety. They have helped multiple people that come and do anything with our facility. I don't know how many phone calls I've had to field, because I also do some admin work as well at the office, where the, I have people calling in because they've found out what's going on and they want to save our horses. I understand their concerns about the manure smell, and I have told Dr. Harbison, I will drive that hour every day, even Saturday and Sunday, and I don't come up, but I am at the center Monday through Friday, at least usually until 7:00 at night. I will gladly go out there and shovel the manure and get rid of it if that means we can have our horses there. I don't have an issue with it. Those horses are well taken care of, and they mean so much to the county. And I do a lot of work throughout Stanley County, and I plan, I graduate in December, I'm staying on, because coming into Stanley County, seeing the children, seeing the adults that need the help, and not having the mental health people here, I plan on staying here. I may not be a resident, but I work here. Stanley County, I even have my physician here now, because I'm spending so much time. So you have to think, with what she's doing, it helps bring business into the community, because those of us who are driving, we're going to your local stores, we're doing everything in more local in Stanley County instead of taking our money elsewhere. So I really urge you guys to think about it, and if it is, comes down to the manure, like I said, I'll drive that hour every single day, and I will clean it up. I have no problems, because where I live, there's horses in tinier spots all up and down our roads in Richmond County, and none of us are complaining. We deal with the smell, but if that's what it takes to keep our horses, I will gladly come every day and clean that horse manure up myself.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Carla Shepherd. I live at 2715 Plantation Way in Albemarle, North Carolina. I am an occupational therapist by trade and have served children with special needs as well as trauma victims in Stanley County for over 25 years. At this time, I am an agency that supplies children who have experienced trauma as a referral source for creative counseling and continue, and will continue to do so after this. I want to just reiterate what your attorney has already so eloquently stated, that this is considered not a retroactive ordinance unless you, as the council, so deem it to be so. Therefore, I believe that you should allow this ordinance to be grandfathered in for the sake of the children and the adults who benefit from the services there, and also as the City of Albemarle Department of, I don't know, anyway, has also said that the parties could come together and speak about ways to address the issues and the complaints, and also allow Dr. Harbison opportunity to amend those complaints that have been made against her and the horses. I also, myself, live in a community who has, I live at Vickers Plantation, there are individuals who have chickens in our neighborhood, and there is a group home in our neighborhood that lives beside someone who has chickens. I, myself, as a taxpayer in Stanley County, as an individual who provides services for children with special needs and children who have trauma, would myself, and this is my personal opinion, would forego complaining about smell when it comes to the future of our children. I will also remind you that our county, Stanley County, is in an opioid epidemic at this very moment, and Dr. Harbison provides a very valuable and viable service to help our community combat this terrible issue that is going on right now. And to see her have to uproot her horses and to cause disruption in the lives of the individuals and families that she serves is a travesty, in my opinion. I, myself, did not sleep very well last night, as well as Dr. Harbison, because of the very passion that I have in what she does, as it applies to me as well. I also wanted to say that I appreciate your time, and I believe that we can all come to a very amenable conclusion to this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
My name's Heather Llewellyn. I live at 549 Wade Road in Oakboro. I attend Montrique College for graduate school. I'm studying to be a counselor, and I'm interning with Dr. Harbison. When she hired me, she asked how much experience I had with horses, which is a lot. So I work about half the time with the horses. I started about two months ago, and the other half the time, I am helping clients know how to interact with the horses safely. And when I started two months ago, we established that I would be cleaning the manure once a week before the session started, and I've been doing that for two months now. And after this became public and everything, I started doing it two and three times a week. So I'm curious to know if that has made a difference, but I'm afraid that the complaint is really coming from a place of, does it hurt my property value to have horses next to it? I'm afraid that's where it's coming from. So I'm wondering if I start doing it every day, if we remove the manure, if that will make a difference, because we are all willing to do it, everyone that's here, because we see the progress that it's making. And Councilman Townsend, I think you had a great idea to see what we can do about the smell, what can we do about the flies, because Dr. Harbison is more than willing to comply. She would do anything for the horses, anything for the town, and what she is doing, the stable relationships, is a program she developed. It's, honestly, she does a lot of cutting-edge work with horses and people, and she's going all around, teaching it, teaching these programs. So I think it's wonderful progress for the City of Albemarle to have these things going on. So I'm hoping you'll see it that way, and I'm really glad that you guys have seen that the image of neglect that has been painted is not true. So I hope that that's enough, because you guys have been listening so well, even though it's been a long session, you've clearly been paying attention, and that means a lot. You've clearly been paying attention and that means a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Monica, I do not have a last name.
I'm not a good speaker. Thank you for your time. My name is Monica.
Give your last name and address, please.
Can I just give you my initial? I'm a, okay, thank you. A victim of domestic violence and I, anyway, P.O. Box.
You can actually give it to the lady I'm hearing private after.
Okay, thank you. I live in Combaris County. I work closely with Laura and Sage and Zaffron. But I just want to say that she works closely with the FBI and with the state attorney and the local law enforcement agencies to train them on human trafficking. It's very important work that she does. She trains them, she teaches them how important therapy is after they get the victims out of the situations that they're in. And she dedicates her entire time, I don't think she has any downtime. She's either writing books on stable relationships and how to make that a better program or human trafficking and how to make the program better for them, for PTSD victims, for complex trauma victims. She's constantly trying to help any type of victim. And we really need to keep the horses because they really help all of our victims. She's pinnacle in the community. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Bowers, just put the first name and put confidential on the rest of it. Anna Call?
Hey, my name is Anna Call. I am getting my degree in therapeutic horsemanship at St. Andrews University and I'm already certified instructor. I have worked with Laura ever since high school and worked with her and the horses. I'm an equine specialist and I've grown up around horses. I've grown up knowing their body language, just knowing everything I can about horses. One thing I want to talk about is the horse care. Every time I go out there, they're happy, they're fine where they're at. Like Dr. Harbison said, if we had a bigger area for them, it would actually harm them. It would not help them at all. The space that they're at now is actually beneficial because it also is a little hilly, so they can get exercise that way. Hills are good for horses to get exercise if they can't be ridden. Their coats are nice and shiny, which is an example of good healthcare. Sage, she's like a buckskin, so she's kind of yellow. She has dapples on her, which is little spots on her, which is also a sign of a healthy horse. The, also what was brought up was, you know, the eight to 10 inches of grass. Horses do not eat tall grass. They like the short, little grass that's about that big. And also with Zaffron, the paint horse, if she was to eat a lot and gain more weight, then that would also hurt her navicular disease because it will put pressure on the leg. One thing I want to bring up that all of us have brought up is the manure. And all of us are willing to, we can have a manure party. We'll go out there, you know, bring food, anything. We'll scoop it all up, we'll take it away, anything that we can do to help. And also with the flies, I don't know about y'all, but in the summertime, no matter where you're at, there's going to be a lot of flies. There's flies everywhere. And yes, horses can attract flies. All animals attract flies. And especially if you're having a picnic outside, if you're having, you know, food or whatever. Flies love food. And it doesn't even matter if the horses weren't there, you still don't know where they've been. You know, there's still garbage on the street, there's still all that stuff. So it's not necessarily the manure and flies that I find like an issue. And like I said, like the horses have benefited so much. And it helps the clients as well, but also it helps the horses. Because the horses can feel when a person is upset. They feel people's emotions and then that's what really clicks with people. I know from my experience, horses have helped me so much. Two years ago, I was paralyzed. And if I didn't have horses in my life, I would still be in a wheelchair. Because I was determined, they gave me hope. And yes, I have my own horses, but people aren't so lucky to have their own horses. In fact, I've struggled 15 years to get my own horse and finally it happened. But for the people who aren't as lucky to have their own horse, they go to Dr. Harbison and they can find that connection. And that one picture that was on the binder, even though, you know, she doesn't have an eye, she sees me better than anyone, that speaks volumes. Because we're not here necessarily for the business. We're here to speak up for the horses because the horses can't come in here and speak for themselves like they want to. But if you see them, they're happy. They're not concerned, they're not worried, you know, they're not big and fat, they're not really skinny. You know, they get enough food and hay. And then also, you know, like I said, with the manure and flies, that's not as big of an issue. We will do whatever we can to help that. And I feel like this could have been settled in other ways, but it's come up to this now. So I really urge you to listen to what we say and, you know, look at the ignorance. And ignorance isn't always a bad thing. Ignorance shows you what you don't know so you can go and learn it. And so I think that's been a big part of this is just miscommunication, not really knowing the full truth and stuff. So I thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah A. Lowman. I live on 218 Wilson Street. And I have not any degree except that I'm 80. And I heard on the news last night what was going on and I have a question for you all. If it was good enough when she moved in, why the hell isn't it good enough now?
Thank you.
And I also notice that I go by that place five to six days a week, four times, back and forth. I go pick up my grand dogs to watch them. And every time I go by 24, 27, I get a terrific smell of chicken manure. Do I complain? Hell, no. It serves a purpose. Well, why not? Why should I complain? Yes, I can understand flies. I lived on a farm and they're there. We didn't have any animals for a while. They were there anyhow. We couldn't eat outside because it was too hot and the flies were there. Well, I lived in New York. Come here in the summertime, I don't go outside. So what's the big deal? Your windows are closed, your air conditioning's on, how the hell can you smell manure? Okay? In the wintertime, when it cools off, I go outside, the flies are gone, mosquitoes are gone. If I still smell manure, I say, helluya, somebody's doing some good. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalina? Rosalina?
Hello, thank you. My name's Rosalina Conroy. I'm a general pediatrician and part of the work that I do is in Mecklenburg County as a child abuse pediatrician. So what I wanted to come talk to you all about, you've heard all the great things that Dr. Harbison does as far as the prevention, as far as the treatment of the mental health. What I wanted to talk to you also about is there's a physical consequence to, lots of physical consequences to the abuse. And so some of it, you've seen, you've heard her talk about the horses and the injuries that they've had and the medical problems that they have, the ulcers, the bone problems. And a lot of that stems from the abuse that they suffered. And so children and adults who suffer complex trauma are at risk for not only the mental health issues that we've all talked about, but also medical. There's a higher incidence, it's what's called the ACE studies, the adverse childhood experiences, that the more adverse, there's 10 of them, and the more you have, the more likely you are to have early death. And a lot of that just comes from the stress of complex trauma. And I won't bore you with the medical part of it, with all the stress hormones, but having the brain pickled constantly with stress hormones is not good. It rewires the brain, it affects how these kids think, how the adults think. And so the work that she does is really crucial because it, taking them away from the stress is very important. But then healing what has happened to the brain is also important with what she does. So I just also wanted to talk about the opioid crisis. And a lot of that is stemming from untreated, unresolved, complex trauma that these people have had. And so she's taking great steps and doing great work to prevent, to prevent the consequences from this crisis. And so, so every county in North Carolina has an opioid crisis. It's increasing. And to have something here that combats that is invaluable to your county. So I really encourage you to grandfather her in. And as everyone else who's been supporting her has said, we're all willing to help, whatever we can do to help with the nuisance issue. But, but it not only affects these people's mental health, but it will affect them physically. And the cost of that down the road is something that I hope you take into consideration with the decisions that you make now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joy Vaughn? Thank you. Mandy, is it Lou Ellen?
Hey, how are you? I was not in here prepared to speak today, so I kind of typed up something while I was sitting there. I am a social worker with Stanley County DSS and have been doing that for a while. I've referred several clients to Dr. Harbison over the years. I cannot speak for our agency, but I can speak personally on what I have observed. Often we see that children that grow up in trauma are products of parents that also suffered trauma in childhood and never received proper therapy or counseling to teach them how to come to terms with their experiences. One goal I have as a social worker is breaking that cycle so that children I work with can overcome their own adverse experiences and parent children that do not have to recover from their childhood. One of the major obstacles we run into is that children that have been traumatized and let down by grownups over and over in their lives, they're very, very slow to place their trust in an adult stranger who says that he or she is there to help. I've been in the unique position on several occasions to be the one to try to convince that child to take a chance and at least try counseling. Most children, no matter how initially resistant to counseling they may be, actually benefit from that if they will take that chance and open up and try. They, they need a trusted adult that cares enough to listen to their story, to help them develop coping strategies to better handle some of the things in their lives that are beyond their own control. The biggest hurdle I've run into is convincing these kids to just give it a chance. Creative Counseling has a unique opportunity for these kids to interact with horses and other animals while meeting with a therapist in a relaxed, informal outdoor session. So who here didn't as a kid either want a pony or want to be a cowboy or want to play with a horse somehow? Seriously, anybody didn't want to do that as a kid? Anybody? No? Never wanted a horse? Okay, so there's always that 1%. But, so again, you know, what little girl or boy has not at some point or another loved horses and wished they could have one or spend time with them? Most of the kids that attend Creative Counseling are from our lower socioeconomic circles. I believe Dr. Harbison had said that she's funded mostly by Medicaid or does free services. These kids never thought they'd have that chance. Seriously. To be able to tell them, hey, you get to go play with these horses, that changes things like that, seriously. I've seen kids that say, I'm not talking to a counselor, I'm not doing it. And I'm talking five-year-olds up to 16-year-olds. It just changes it. They're willing to give it a chance. Do they stay just with the horses? Sometimes, sometimes no, maybe they move into individual therapy. But it shows them that they can have that opportunity. That sometimes, just because I grew up in the poor part of town and my parents couldn't afford riding lessons or, you know, I never thought I would be able to be here and, and see a horse and ride a horse and have that pony time, maybe other things are possible too. Maybe it is possible to get through what I'm going through in my life. Maybe it's possible to learn how to deal with that. And I think that, to me, is the most important. So what I'm saying is I hope that there is some way that we don't take this service away from our kids because I really have seen the benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Last name is Ledbetter. I can't tell if that's John or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my name is John Ledbetter. I live at 24106A St. Martin Road. I'd like to first start off by saying I'm a married husband with seven kids. Come from a blended family, so we have your kids, my kids and our kid. Counseling has been an imperative thing in my household, very imperative. Several of my kids have been, and for a multitude of reasons. One of the biggest reasons my kids go to counseling has been for bullying. To me, this ain't nothing but modern-day bullying. I mean, I don't live anywhere near a horse and I got flies every day. I fight them every day. I got smells, I smell every day. You know what? I suck it up and deal with them. I got kids that, they're just want some attention, that's all they're asking for. And you're trying to take it away from them. All they want is just a few minutes, just to be outside, to talk to somebody, to be near somebody that understands them. A horse don't talk back, it just listens. That's all they want. Seven kids and at least three or four of them go to counseling. And you're trying to take something away that's been life-changing to my family. I don't support it a bit. If we're going to ban horses because there's manure, because there's crap, let's get rid of cats, let's get rid of dogs, let's get rid of rabbits, let's get rid of the bunnies, let's get rid of all of it. You want to take a horse away because it, I'll go help. I've counted six people already that said they would help shovel manure. I'm number seven, that's one for every day of the week. I'll take tomorrow. I'll show up tomorrow. If you guys want me to come, I'll come tomorrow. Seven people already have said they'll shovel manure to keep the smell down. I'll be number seven. I appreciate your time and this means something to my kids and I just don't want to see it go away.
Thank you. Shawna Burns?
Hi, everybody. My name is Shawna Burns. I live at 17327 Baldwin Hall, that is in Charlotte, North Carolina. I live in Ballentine and I drive every week an hour and a half here and an hour and a half back because the only place that has the therapy that will help my daughter is her. I drive all the way from Ballentine every week. I have my bullet journal from 2017, which is the very first bullet journal. If you don't know, it's for people that are super crafty and organizing, keep track of everything, that forgets stuff. That's what this is. And I didn't make copies of it, but I'll be happy to pass it around. And it's from 2017 when I first met Laura. I've been going to her since 2017, every single week. I've been there in the winter, I've been there in the heat of the summer, and I have never once smelled manure. In her yard, in her pasture, I have never smelled manure, not one time. And yeah, I'm sure horses do smell like manure, but look where you live. I live in Ballentine. I live in a city where there are no horses. If you want to live in a city where you don't smell horses, go buy a house in a place where you can't have horses. If you can have horses here in this county, I don't even understand why we're here. I don't understand why this person didn't go to her at first and say, we have this problem and give her a chance to rectify it. I feel like this is a waste of everyone here's time. I don't feel like she is in any way doing anything to harm anyone, if anything. She is providing a service that no one else provides. Another thing that you will see in my bullet journal, and I have it very clearly marked, is a list of every equine specialist in Charlotte, none of which would help me. In my own city, none of which would help me. She helps me. I drive that far because I have to. I would go to somewhere in Charlotte if I could. If there was someone in Charlotte that could help my kid, I would be there. But there's not. I beseech you to understand that there is a bigger picture here than someone who's upset about the lack of possible property in the future. I'm upset that they're worried about flies in their backyard when these kids are literally like life and death situations. My child has to go to the psychiatric emergency room every couple of months because she is in a life or death situation. Not, I'm sorry, there's flies on my picnic. This is a life or death situation that she's dealing with every single week. Every kid that comes to her, comes to her because they've been sent to her. I was referred to her by the FBI. My daughter was a national case. You feel free to Google. You feel free to Google me, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I'm not going to go into it because it's irrelevant. I was referred to her by the FBI. The FBI. If the FBI is saying, go to this woman, there's a reason for that. She's the only one that they sent me to. Even though I live in Charlotte, they said, drive all the way to Baden, which is not where she is now. Twenty more minutes is where I used to go for the last two years, under twenty more minutes than where I do now. I was happy when she got this place. I was like, shoot, that's 20 minutes off my commute. It's still three hours every week. Now, like other Shawna said, every time I come out here, I buy gas, and I go to the handy mart. Every time I come out here, I stop at the Dollar General. Every single time I come out here, my daughter and me, we go and we get lunch, we go and we spend money in your county. I like it. I'm from North Carolina, I grew up in Asheville. I live in the city. There are no trees, there are no hills, there are no pastures, there's nothing. I love the drive out here. I love driving on 2427. There's a lot of cops. But other than that, I love driving on 2427. There's like four jurisdictions at one time, so that is an issue. But I love it. It's so beautiful. It's so beautiful to come out here. And I feel so privileged to be able to come out here and access her. And I beg you, I beg you, I will literally get on my knees if you won't. Beg you, please, let's take this service away. There is nothing like it anywhere. Here, she's the only one that provides this service for people that have complex PTSD. Not just PTSD, complex PTSD, even more complicated PTSD than just regular PTSD. She's the only one. My daughter is 19, and I've had none of her her whole life. And Laura understands her better than I do. Laura gets her. She gets her PTSD. She gets what happens. She gets, she understands her. It's the first time ever my daughter's like, she gets me. She understands. I don't have to explain everything, she just gets it. We have gone to counselors, we've gone to psychiatric emergency rooms, we've stayed in residential birth homes. We've done all of those things since she was 11 years old. None of those things ever helped. Two years with her have helped more than all of those things combined. I beg you, please, do not let these people do whatever they're trying to do to stop this. But I'm with him. I don't... I'm not somebody that lives on a farm and shovels manure, because I'm not. I'm a stay-at-home mom in Ballentine. I drive a minivan. That's my life. But I will pick up a shovel, and I will shovel manure. I will go out there, and I will do whatever we have to do to keep our practice. Please, 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 Sarah, please, 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 don't take this away from my daughter. There is nothing else like it.
Thank you.
Would you like to see? There's pictures? I'm working here. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Jessica Ledbetter?
Hello, I'm Jessica Ledbetter, and I live at 24106A St. Martin Road. I am a mother of children that go to Creative Counseling. I've also participated with my son in the Stable Relationships program, and I'm a germaphobe. I don't like grossness. And I participated with the horses. Never once was I disgusted by anything or a smell. I know animals smell, I have dog. But I never, I never had manure smell or anything like that. It was always so clean. We visited, what, 10 weeks in a row, 10 weeks. Now they go every other week, and I, there's no smell. So you can shovel extra manure if you want to, there's still no, there's nothing there to do that. Don't make a move. I work for the county. It helps me, where they're located, get my children there, because we're there a lot. And all these other people are too. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Turner?
I know you guys are tired. I'm Rachel Turner. I live on 1918 Wood Haven Drive. I'm what some people in Stanley County would also call an interloper. Not born and raised, you'll probably hear it in the accent. I talk a little fast, so yes, I am from the north. And I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to all the words, and I'm listening. And people want to be heard. And Mr. Runyon wants to be heard. And what I'm hearing, though, is that he's calling people interlopers, that they don't belong. They don't belong. Why doesn't she belong? And we're talking about manure, okay? The other thing I'm hearing over there, because the Runyon side here, you know, I teach kids, and I'm teaching them how to be good friends. And I also tell them, when a teacher is speaking, who's talking? You know what they say? The teacher. Who else is talking? No one. And Mr. Runyon over here, he can't keep quiet. He just keeps interrupting. I've been told to shut up because I'm being, shh, please be quiet, because we're wanting to hear, we're wanting to listen. This side here, they just want to talk. They don't want to listen. And I keep hearing, ah, Jesus. One thing that I really appreciate, because when I'm in the north, if you had prayed, you would have been on the earth for something totally different. And I appreciated that. I appreciated that you were praying and bringing that about. And I'm sitting here listening to Jesus, and I'm hearing this, and I'm thinking about interlopers, and I'm thinking, huh, we're praying and we're invoking Jesus's name even as we begin things, and we might be saying his name in vain. Jesus was born in a manger. He was born near manure. He was born near crap. He was born... They didn't walk in and say, Jesus, you stink. They didn't walk in and go, I can't be here because this stinks, I can't have my picnic. They didn't. And this is a community that I appreciate because it's a community. And I may be an interloper because I am not from here, but I don't claim that. Because I work with the kids in the school where this county has taken money to hire trauma specialists. They have spent tax dollars to say, you know what? We have a problem. It's not just about the opioid epidemic of adults. We have children, five, six, seven years old, who have no clue what's going on in their lives. No clue. They are spending thousands of dollars on trauma specialists. I would love to know how many of you, for other school reasons, I know that comes up a lot, how many of you have been in a school lately? How many of you heard about what they're doing when it comes to this? And now we have a group of, I think I counted 20 people, who can't stand the way something That is asinine to me. And what blew me away even more, and I actually loved it, I loved that Mr. Townsend said, I didn't know what you did. I don't know how many of you actually knew what she did and what she does for this community. And you voted on something without knowing all the facts. What I appreciate is you are asking a lot of questions, and you're asking a lot of great questions. And that gives me faith that you guys are actually thinking about this. Because to some degree, it has to be a logical decision. You can't just go off feelings. You can't go off these eight people who have tugged on your heartstrings. You can't do it. And so I appreciate that you're asking questions, but I'm also concerned that these questions weren't asked before. That lawyers are being brought in to say, hey, did we make the right decision? Are we, did we do okay here? That's scary to me. I believe Mr. Townsend also said he's pro-business. That is a business. And look at how many people drove from Charlotte to come in to live here. My partner and I don't live here because we love the small-town kind of thing. We love the small-town community. We love being at the schools we are at. We love it. We love those hard babies. We love having you Ari close by. We love going to Le Cuisin, because when we walk in, the owner, she knows what we want to eat. I could go to the same restaurant in Charlotte 100 times, and they're just going to be like, how can I help you? There's so much we love here. But what, this town has so much going on, so much broken about it, and we're arguing about poop. It's just, I can't fathom it. I've literally never come to a council meeting, I can say I'm probably going to come to more, because one, it's fascinating, and two, it blows me away that so much gets passed without there being a total knowledge of everything that's happening. And if I had known, I could have come and been like, well, hold on a second. Why isn't Laura here? Why isn't she speaking up? And if we're going to be a town that is loud and cherishes praying, why aren't we going to somebody? The Bible says, go to that person if you have a problem. Go to them. I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe Mr. Runyon said, if someone thinks, if someone knows hard work, have them come see me. He's the only one who's not offered to go shovel poop. No one from this side has said, I will go shovel poop. I will go shovel poop. I work 40 hours a week. I get to school every day at 7:15, though I can watch babies for an enrichment program. And then I spend the rest of the day teaching them how to be kind. And yet I'm here, I'm here hearing adults be unkind. How are we going to fix our babies if we can't even fix ourselves? How? How is that possible? How are our schools going to get better? So a community of, let's just say it's 50 houses, they might lose some money because of horse poop. How much money is this town going to lose and this county going to lose if our schools keep going down? If the opioid epidemic keeps going up? Her business isn't just about dollars and cents. But if you want it to be, it's a lot of dollars and cents. It's a lot. It's bringing things in. This town has a hard time bringing businesses in, and I see us closing the door on one, and it just doesn't make sense to me. If you guys think there's someone else who offers this and you guys have better solutions, that'd be awesome. That'd be great. But right now, I'm just fearful that a decision was made because someone complained. That's really good to know, because I have a neighbor who's pretty obnoxious. So it's good to know. Maybe if I just, if I'm that loud, obnoxious voice, maybe I can get them to move out too. But I wouldn't, because it's a group home. And I live with them being annoying, because it's a group home for adults who can't live on their own. So I don't call and complain when they're literally screaming at the top of their lungs. And correct me if I'm wrong, that that would be considered a nuisance, correct? I don't call, because I have compassion and I understand what's going on. And I really hope you continue to ask the right questions and continue to look at this, not from just a logical standpoint, because I know you have to, but also just seeing what Laura actually provides for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Last name is Shepherd, but I cannot catch the first one.
Gabby.
Gabby, okay.
My name is Gabrielle Shepherd. I live at 480 Anderson Grove Church Road in Albemarle. I try to be concise. I'm tired too. But to, I'll probably get choked up talking. But to put it in perspective, I've worked all day, like many people in this room. But what a testament of love. So I've worked all day. I have a two-year-old. I have a sick husband at home. But I chose to stay here. I'm going to try to be concise as much as possible. First of all, I'm just going to say, I guess I'm just going to have to say what I think. So first of all, it's poop. We've established that. It's poop. Second of all, I met Laura doing social work. I was a Child Protective Services social worker from 2012 to 2015. I now work at the State of Voice Credit Union in Troy. I can't say enough about her, the great things about her. I'm on the board, the nonprofit board. I am the vice president of that board. So the first thing is, these aren't your average horses. We've established that at this point. They can't have the acreage and be safe without it. The other thing is, is, you know, the issue is, is there's been complaints about them getting out. Your dog's going to get out a couple of times before you figure out how they got out, right? If you've got a dog at home, takes you, may take you a couple of times of it getting loose before you're like, hey, they're getting out over here, I need to go fix that. But she did that. I would also go as far to say is, it could have been avoided. It did not have to escalate to this. It all could have been avoided. Laura is a pretty reasonable person, I would say. I'm sure if somebody would have came to the side and said, you know, this is really aggravating me, this really stinks, you know, she would have done something about it then, I would go as far to say. The services that she provides for our county are obviously unmatched, you've heard that. But not just in, I understand that the neighbors are complaining. I understand that they don't like the smell. But I would implore you to think, if you had, if your children couldn't receive this service anywhere else, and it was your child in that neighborhood receiving services, but your neighbor was complaining, and now all of a sudden, your child doesn't get to receive that service anymore, you'd probably wish your neighbor would have just sucked it up. I would probably have sucked it up, like the lady that lives beside the group home. I'd probably just suck up the yelling. Because I know what kind of service is provided to this county and this community. I'm sorry that I'm not very cohesive in speaking tonight. I didn't expect I'm getting that emotional, but she does do so much good for the county, and I think that we can all agree on that, that the service she provides is not the issue at all. That it's the smell and the flies. Well, you're going to have it. If I go poop outside, there's going to be flies too. So, I mean, I just hope that I can be like Sarah when I'm 80. I just want to say that. She just said what she thought. I do think that it should be considered for her to be grandfathered in. I do think that there should be something where it can be a compromise. Obviously, you know, I know that the mayor said earlier that there was two other cases that you knew of that could be potentially impacted by, you know, this ordinance pertaining to two acres per horse. But these horses aren't those horses. Those horses are probably normal, healthy horses that aren't disabled, that aren't rescued, that are endangered of being put down, if they are having to be uprooted. So I would just like to move there to be some sort of compromise. Because again, I don't think that it's the service that she provides. I think that if nothing else comes out of this tonight, we should learn to love our neighbors. And quite frankly, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed that I live in a county where somebody's complaining about poop, for someone who's helping children and other people in this county. The county that is the number one in the state for overdoses, that county. The county where you can get free narking. Somebody's going to, you know, people fall asleep in their car, they have to put a sign on, say, don't narkin' me, you know? I'm asleep, don't narkin' me. I just feel like, in all honesty, there are better things that we can complain about. That's plain and simple. And if we're wanting to be like Jesus, this ain't it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think the last, I think I saw Jerry Myers leave. Okay. Pam Lambert?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. And I will make this quick, because I too am tired. I'm here representing my neighborhood. There are 19 of us here who are homeowners, taxpayers, and we live here. We lived in that community before the counseling service was there. Now, I am concerned that the focus of large animals inside the city limits adjacent to subdivisions has been lost in our conversation in matters concerning the counseling service on Wexman. Being an educator for over 40-plus years, I of all people appreciate all that Ms. Harbison does. I've actually worked with her before, and I know that she's awesome. I'm glad we have her here, someone that can work with these adults and children who need those services. Closing her business is not at all what we've asked for. This is not what we want. The services she provides is noteworthy, but not to the detriment of an entire neighborhood. The horses are obviously being taken care of in the way that she's been trained to do, not the way that we, who grew up in the country, knew how to do. So we understand there's some differences there. We are not asking for her to have her horses put down. We are just asking that they don't negatively impact the neighborhood like they currently are. Like I said, I've been living there 20 years. If you look at our age group over here, none of us are spring chickens. We've worked forever for these to be our homes. We're not going to move. This was our community. The community gets together. We're a very close-knit community. We get together. We do have cookouts. We do have neighborhood gatherings. And it is not pleasant sometimes. All of us walk, gosh, we need to. We all, several of the ladies walk every morning and every evening. That's where all this smell stuff came from. It is, I mean, it's just nature. But we chose to live in the city, because I grew up out near that. But we chose to live in the city because I grew up out near that. I chose to live in the city. All we're asking is that you will help us in answering this problem and consider the ordinance that you've passed so that large animals can't be in the city. Don't want to hurt her business, don't want to hurt her horses. We just want to protect our rights to live in our homes. These people come and go. We live there. We can't leave. We live right there with the horses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, that's all the people we have signed up as non-announced delegation for this topic. Mr. Townsend, you mentioned earlier you had a motion.
I was gonna make a motion after hearing and taking into consideration everything that's been said, you know. Obviously, we don't want to take for granted the thoughts and opinions of the homeowners, the property owners, you know, because they brought out some valid concerns. But just from, after listening to Mr. Beaver, I believe that counsel, pretty much from my opinion, have no choice but to move forward and recommend that we grandfather this ordinance. You know, anybody that's affected by this ordinance, you know? Because if we don't, I say this, you know, how are we gonna go back and treat our other ordinances? Things that's been affected by that? I think we're gonna find ourselves in a situation where we picking and choosing what we want to grandfather. And I think we need a sort, a sense of consistency, you know? So I put it in the form of a motion that we grandfather this ordinance.
A motion by Councilmember Townsend to grandfather this location or any, or any, any individual affected before the date of this new order?
Correct, correct. The individuals and businesses.
Yes, sir.
If we do that, and thinking of Robert's Rules of Order, if we're gonna change the nature of the ordinance that we passed, don't we have to go back and rescind the action on the other ordinance and then move forward with this?
Well, actually, he's not, Mr. Beaver, come on up. Actually, my understanding, he's not asking to rescind the ordinance. He's just saying that we grandfather anybody-
Don't we have to rescind the ordinance? Because we're changing the nature of what we, of action that we take?
I think what the issue was, was the ordinance you all enacted affected the day you enacted it? Or was it retroactive? What I understand is, it was enacted and put into place the day you all passed it, whatever day that, whatever time that was. And it applies anything from here on out. I don't know the whole lot for you to really do unless, one thing I thought about when I was sitting there, oftentimes private citizens can get more accomplished than government. We look to government sometimes to solve private citizens' problems. And I've heard goodwill on both sides. I don't know that they couldn't get together and draw up some kind of consensual agreement that the smell would be eradicated and thereby making the neighborhood where Mr. Runyon and others live, you know, smell-free, so to speak, where people can get out and walk, have their, have their, you know, outdoor activities, one thing or another. That would have to be put to the parties, but, you know. I would assist them in doing it. And I wouldn't even see them, I wouldn't even send the mayor bill for it.
Well, that's why I brought that up. I said before, if there's any way not to have a loser and a winner, but everybody's a winner, that's what we ought to do. And I'd like to see us have a study group put together to see if we can't come up with a resolution for this without going to the extreme action of letting them be the winner and them be the loser. I don't like that.
For me personally, it was way too much, you know. You know, we were trying to figure out, hey, what was said at this meeting? Did we say that? Did we not say that? Do you remember this? Do you remember that? I'm not comfortable until we, to Councilmember Bramlett's point, till we review the situation. Because again, the, you know, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable moving forward right now.
Okay. Got it. I was just trying to, I tried to keep these things-
The mayor and/or Michael, you know, review the ordinance with Kevin and just see whether it said it was retro. I don't think it was retroactive. I'm pretty certain, but I'm, I don't, I can't remember where I've come up ahead, you know?
I'm gonna remind council some of their famous words a few months back, whenever we had another controversial issue. You know, it was council members that said, you know, sometimes in situations like this, we can't make everybody happy. We gotta make the tough decisions. And tonight is another one of them examples.
Sure.
And granted, based on what we've heard tonight, there's, there's some people that are gonna be happy and there's some that are gonna be sad. But to what he's saying, I want to make sure that we have all the right information that we've discussed in the previous meeting to make sure we don't make a mistake.
See, well, based on what David said, I'm not, at least what I'm hearing is, it doesn't matter what we do. If we, if it was legal before, we passed an ordinance that makes it illegal, they still could operate as they were operating. Is that not what-
You've already done it. I mean-
That's what I'm hearing.
I think an ordinance, I mean, I think a motion, and I'll second, I think it's a moot point. I think it's already-
I think Councilmember Bramlett's suggestion was not bad in that if they could get a representative to be excited, maybe we could construct somehow a very, very simple agreement that would address both parties' concern, let her do her good works, and at the same time, make these neighborhoods smell-free and insect-free and one thing or another. It can be done, I think. It's going to require some work. And they can maybe get together and do it by way of a private agreement.
But you've still got two separate things. You're looking at whether or not it's in compliance with zoning?
Yeah.
And then whether or not it's in compliance with the nuisance ordinance?
I think what their concern is-
Is the nuisance ordinance?
-the zoning thing as it is, there are other ordinances they may be violating.
Well, there's, that's two different, two different issues.
And that's the reason earlier I said to you, yes, no, or do we need to go back and look? Because I wanted to hear, based on prior court cases with an ordinance. If it was not mentioned, anything in there as to when it starts or grandfather retroactive or any of that, where were we?
And generally speaking, when you pass an ordinance and it acted effective, this date it applies to things that occur after that date. It does not. We've had a number of state statutes enacted having to do with our attorney, various things, you know? And every one of them was prospective. I can't recall a retroactive state statute in the last two or three years.
So Chair, so Mayor, there's a, there's a motion.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor.
And a second. You do have a second. And if somebody will-
Further discussion.
Clarify for me three states the motion.
Mr. Townsend, you want to restate your motion?
I just, I want to know what's on the table.
I'm confused.
My motion is basically to grandfather everybody that's affected that was already in operation prior to the adoption of the ordinance that we passed at the last meeting.
If they were in legal operation, you grandfather.
Correct.
And Chris Witt leaves a second.
And I second it. However, I think it's a moot point because I don't think we have to even do it. I think according to what he said, that they're legal already, based on court cases. And the smell and all that doesn't have anything to do with zoning.
No, it's got to do with the nuisance.
It's got to do with the nuisance.
Separate issue.
It's totally separate issue.
But I love the idea of coming together and seeing if we can all work together. Okay?
All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So where do we stand?
Where we stand right now is, last thing that Mr. Beaver suggested was to see if the groups want to come together and reach an agreement.
And you mentioned earlier, Mayor, that there are some other, possibly two other people that might be affected by this. How many different groups are we, as a city, gonna reach out to?
I personally don't think we reach out to any of those.
We've had, we've had a public hearing.
We've had a public hearing.
We've had a public hearing.
Yeah, and that's, that's another problem in itself. Well, you know, actually, when we went through that public hearing process, personally, I was sitting here wondering why I didn't ever hear nothing from this, the doctor. I'm just gonna say the doctor, you know? And I understand why. You know, we've done everything legally that we're supposed to do, you know, because it wasn't designed to affect one particular business.
That's exactly right.
So we didn't send it to particular addresses. But then, we know the primary business that was being discussed during the public hearing was a business that wasn't even aware of it. You know, I don't know what we can do going forward in the future to make sure, you know, make sure that we got all parties that's affected.
Had it been a rezoning, you're not correct. We would have notified them. Since it was a text amendment change, it was in the paper, it was on the radio. Yeah, right. Okay. All right, so counsel, any other motions? Are we gonna see if the groups can come together and see if they can come to agreement? As it stands right now, the ordinance is still in effect because we've already passed it.
Nothing, nothing.
The ordinance is in effect, and if the groups can come together and talk about the nuisance, that's a separate issue. That's not, not the text amendment and the zoning. That's a separate issue.
So what about the two horses on less than two acres?
Right, one, one, yeah. One on two.
What counsel passed was one horse on two acres.
And she got less than-
And she's got, she's got less than that, but it's gonna come down to, Mr. Beaver says that we're, we can't enforce that. So we need to get, counsel, counsel, I can't enforce that right now, Mike.
We need clarification to assume, to where, what the issue that David brought up, we need clarification on that whole issue of grandfathering or moving forward.
Clarification from who? Your attorney's already told you who. So who are you talking about? School of Government or what?
Point of order. I believe, based on what David answered, that we have to.
That's what I'm saying.
And I believe, based on prior, that we have to grandfather. I mean, I truly believe that.
I agree.
Okay, so we're good.
So that's what I believe. However, I made mention two hours ago that I really would like to see what it was that we did say, okay? I really want to see that. Because I don't remember that issue, okay? I don't remember it. But I think based on the attorney who has been, his firm has been the firm forever, and prior court cases, that we have to. Do I want to do that? I believe these folks over here have a right to, to where they live. And they, I mean, I believe that. I also believe that we have, that we have to do.
We have to follow the law.
Yeah, and the law, I mean, our case, our own case law, and I may not, and I don't have a JD behind my name. I don't have an MD behind my name. But that's what I believe.
[inaudible]
Now, she was supposed to move the horses out, they can't every day. Just what Kevin told me, I come to him, he asked me, says she moved them out, I said, no. She moved them in, they've been here ever since.
The numbers that she had, they were allowed.
One minute, one minute, sorry.
And we want the neighbors to work this out.
Yeah, there's no way. Mayor surely got something.
Mr. Beaver?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe the General Assembly in Washington could function under the circumstances we've had tonight and the time length that we've spent on it. I would think we need to come together again, once again, and, yeah, once again, because we couldn't do it in three hours and, what, 40 minutes? Any decision we make now is, is just, can't be expected to be a good decision.
But I also want to bring up a point that was just made, I think it was Mr. Lambert made to Kevin. Was that conversation, did that ever happen where you were gonna bring the horses in the morning and take them home in the afternoon?
That was one case.
Can you come up here real quick?
Come on up here.
Thank you.
Prior to setting up the practice, I had met with him to see what the ordinance was, what the zoning was, to make sure not only could I have a counseling practice there, but what it would be regarding horses. At the time, I had horses that were kept in New London at a pasture. And I said, if horses were not allowed to be maintained on this property, if it was a zoning thing, would they be allowed to come visit when I had counseling sessions with the horses? And when I got the feedback was, they're allowed to be there. They're allowed to stay. I said, so I don't have to cart them back. So I just was told I could not set up a barn at that time. So I did not make a barn. So we did not have to cart them back and forth because it was within compliance of the ordinance at the time. So therefore, we didn't cart them back and forth.
Mr. Mayor, what's wrong with asking a simple question to the county, to the School of Government to clarify that issue for us?
Got a motion?
Yes.
A motion by Councilmember, they reach out to the School of Government to clarify the grandfather clause. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll, if we have that at the next meeting, we'll report it then. If not, it may be two meetings. The School of Government sometimes doesn't move really quickly.
And email to them, and they'll respond. Will they respond about 16? I don't know. I'll pray and give out this wheel.
Okay. But I encourage you to work together on the nuisance part. Because this is not addressing the nuisance. This is addressing the zoning issue. Thank you. Calling me to back to order, next item on agenda is another unannounced allegation. Peter Ashutah. Sorry, Peter.
Everyone knew I was gonna speak and they left. Peter Ashutah, 1106 Melkor in Alm, Road in Almaral. Just want to give a shout out to the city. It's cross-country season, and runs are picking up. And I just want to tell you the work that the Parks and Rec has done out there at Chuck Moorhead Park. First of all, that dog park y'all put in over there is just wonderful, especially even looks better with the trees that you guys planted around it. It's just really, really, really nice. And I see people walking around that path that you have around the thing. You might go out there and set the racers, people just doing their walks around that path y'all put in out there. Couple of things, we had a cross-country meet, time flies, it was Thursday last week or something, I don't know. We just had the Vacanash Invitational. We had 11 teams from throughout the region, and there was 260 runners out there. They came from East Lincoln, Ashboro, Salisbury. We had them from all over. And I worked with Lisa because we were worried about things, bathrooms and parking and stuff like that. And she's like, park all the buses in the back. They got Ross to come out, wear it there, and put cones up and everything. And there was 260 runners out there, and the thing went off without a hitch. So kudos to the city working together on that. And the one that we talked about possibly in the future, that is like the hardest cross-country course in the world for people, about perhaps marking the courses for the two-mile and the three-mile mark that's out there permanently. So I don't have to walk up the hills and put the signs up, number one, and number two, so people can come out there and kids can practice. Because there in the past, there's been schools from other counties come to practice at that course to have a nice marked course. And then lastly, we had the Waffle House run on Sunday. And I tell you what, the police department is just fantastic to work with. I just, you know, you call them up. And when I went down to the old Waffle House and then drove back to the other one, I counted six police vehicles out there just parked or driving along the connector just to keep the traffic down. So thank y'all very much for working with the runners and everything else.
Thanks for all you do, Peter.
That's right.
Thank you, Peter. Number 11, municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any comments?
Nope.
Consent agenda. Number 14, the consent agenda, there's a paper laying at your desk tonight, ordinance 1930, you got tonight. One part, on the first one, under regular school session, it should say, on days the elementary school is in session, and take out the East Alamo Park.
Move approval, consent agenda with the amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Bless your heart, Kevin.
Under unfinished business, Ms. Hall asked that we talk about the proposed changes to chapter 92 sidewalks and landscaping.
Ms. Hall did?
Yes, Ms. Hall did.
I did.
You sent an email, want me to know anything?
Wasn't me, I think it was Martha, I think it was Ms. Hughes.
She was asking about the broadband or something.
I didn't ask for this. No, I didn't. I mean-
Well, it's information for you tonight. Well, it's information for you tonight, we'll be talking about it at the next agenda, because we'll have a public hearing. Is anything else council, anybody council needs tonight? If not, we're gonna move on, because we'll be talking about it at a public hearing at next agenda, because we have to have a public hearing to talk about it again.
Okay, I thought, I thought I was gonna get a chance to talk with you guys about it, because I really don't know what it is exactly you guys are looking for in the ordinance right now, and I haven't gotten a chance to discuss it with you.
Make sure he understands what she wants.
I don't think it was me.
I wasn't, I wasn't in on the last meeting, so I really don't, I know some stuff was brought up, but I really didn't get to address it.
Does council have anything they want to talk about? Are you good where it stands?
Uh-uh, okay. Was this the one that we, that we discussed?
After a closed session, Kevin wasn't here.
Having to do with sidewalks and landscaping when you pay.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, there was a lot of controversy about it.
And that's the reason if we're gonna talk about it, we need to do that in open session. Now, if Kevin needs to get you any more information, we need to know that.
And I don't think it was just me, I think it was every, I think, everybody.
We all, after we talked, and Kevin wasn't here after the Pfeiffer meeting.
That's right.
When we talked about this in open session.
Wanted to talk about possibly changing it, and that's why Kevin has supplied you some information tonight. Is there anything else council needs? Counsel, quick comment, Kevin, you got a quick comment or anything you want to say?
Yeah, I've got stuff, I mean, I've got stuff for y'all to talk about what we're doing with, with it right now, because I mean, I'd really like to know before we proceed with making amendments and bringing them to y'all. What, exactly what we're doing, and what the issue is. I heard sidewalks, I heard there's sidewalks and landscaping, those are two different sections, we hadn't even addressed the landscaping sections yet either. I wanted to go over this with you, if I had a minute or two.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, and I apologize, there's some formatting issues with Novus, I think that's why the, the word, with the word document we had before, I think it accepted the changes, so it didn't track them, and I've got an Excel sheet that was formatted correctly that no longer is, so it's hard to look at.
We have it in front of us.
Okay. Anyway, this is what different cities are doing here, and as you can see, they're kind of all across the board. When it comes to how these are addressed, a lot of the sidewalk stuff is tied to new buildings for the most part, not really related to, from what we've seen from the cities that we've looked at so far, not really tied to the repaving of parking lots and such at this point. And then you do have several others, when you do get into repaving and expansion and such, that do require these things. So those are listed on there. Our department is, for a while now, we've considered paved parking, considered that to be part of development, and so we've added it to the, we added it into the requirements for the sidewalks, thinking that it's, it's, it's new development, or redevelopment, whatever you want to call it. Looking at what other cities have done, it seems that very few of them tie pedestrian improvements to repaving of lots, so we'd be more than happy to take that out of the sidewalk section, that phrase in the development section there, and bring that back to you guys.
All right, so that, say that for me one more time, Kevin.
The tying the side, requiring sidewalks with, with repaving of parking lots, which is one of the requirements that we had on there, completely repaven down to the dirt.
Right, okay.
We did have that in there.
Okay.
We could take that out, I mean, that's certainly...
Nobody else does that, is that what you're saying?
None that we've, there may be some, but none that have, none that we've seen so far from those that we've looked at.
I think that was the issue, we were understanding that if you just top-surfaced, you didn't have to do anything, but if you dug it up and repaved it, that triggered the ordinance, even though you weren't changing anything, you weren't changing the footprint. So I think that was...
Well, and that's kind of what I wanted to get at, was, you know, the sidewalks, I could see that. But when you're talking about landscaping, putting in new trees and stuff like that, it actually, it's, a large number of the cities do require that, and in fact, it seems to be, at least from our thinking, from looking at it, seems to actually make more sense. I think it's good when you're expanding your buildings as well, within reason, but it seems to make a lot more sense when you're tearing everything down to the dirt. Because it's the same, I mean, if you're doing new development, or you've got everything down to the dirt, it makes the most sense right then, it's actually the most, probably the most convenient time for the property owner.
So when you're seeing dirt, you're seeing the other cities do landscaping, but not sidewalks?
Right, correct, yeah. And technically, you go back and you look at our ordinance, the way it's written right now, it requires tree islands, shrubs, et cetera, to be installed, street trees to be installed, when a building is enlarged, requiring more parking, enlarged, requiring more parking. And, and I mean, that sounds like there has to be an expansion of the parking lot there. We don't require parking on the vast majority of our development right now, there's only a few things in the ordinance that are still tied to require parking, so there's not really much of a trigger that exists there right now. So if you take that out, it's gonna be really hard to get that back in some places. We consistently tried to enforce this existing ordinance on new development, parking lot expansion, we've always considered removal of asphalt down to sublayers, new parking, it's probably the most convenient time, like I said. Staff's concerned about removing landscaping requirements from repaving, tree island, shrub, street trees, not only they improve aesthetics, our corridors, they help to offer shade, in the case of large, lots of help to organize travel lanes, and reduce cut-through traffic, which if you've ever been in the Ingle's parking lot, or one of those, can be troublesome. I went there today, and it was, there was people cutting diagonally across.
I'm one of them.
Staff does understand the inconvenience having to make these improvements, we do think that repaving is probably the best time, and I'm not talking about going and putting in another layer of asphalt on top, or going through and patching or anything like that, we're talking about actual pulling everything up. And it actually doesn't happen a whole lot, we've only had it happen a handful of times, and funny enough, most of them have been recently. Most of the other times, stuff's been pulled up, there's been expansions of buildings, and there's been expansions of parking lot, and other things going on there.
Yeah.
The Pfeiffer people are gonna, they're gonna be the only one that's gonna need to do this, because everybody else will be grandfathered.
Do it.
With curbing, or whatever, pavement, or whatever, they won't have to do it.
We're not requiring people to go back and cut, before the ordinance, I mean, we, well, I take that back, with the sidewalks, we didn't do anything, we're still doing the landscaping ordinance the same way that we always have right now, but an issue has come up. I haven't proposed to change it yet. We do have several, what we think are very sensible improvements to the ordinance, but we, we haven't had a chance to get to that yet. We'd like to do that and add it in, yeah. I do still think repaven, you know, large portion of your parking lot should trigger the landscaping in those sections. You know, we'd have, we'd really have no recourse in a lot of cases, and I, you know, I wanted to, just real quick, if I could, we also have, and I'll list them here, but in our comprehensive plan for uncommercial development, we've got improved the appearance of commercial areas, present a high-quality image, minimize potential negative impacts of commercial development through high-quality building and site design, grease landscaping and buffering are included in that, and encourage new pedestrian-friendly commercial development, so they're all kind of, they all kind of fall together with that, I think they're, the goals of the city do lend themselves to this. As it is right now, if we were to remove that for repaving, this is across the street on 52 there, we couldn't do anything for this, you couldn't, we couldn't require them to put another tree in on site, none of this.
Come on, you're saying if they just came in and repaved, correct, if they just went over this?
This is the same, this is the same interpretation we're trying to apply on other properties right now, that has become an issue when it comes to the, not the sidewalks.
Right.
But with the, the trees and stuff there.
Kevin, just, just to clarify, I want to make sure we're using the same, yeah, the terms, the same way, we understand, when you said repaving, I thought I heard you also, so when I think of repaving, I think of just putting down a new layer of asphalt.
No, we, well, yeah, it's, it's...
You're talking about, when you rebuild, reconstruct, tear up what's there, that's what you're talking about.
Which is what, in 20 to 30 years, you're gonna need that on your asphalt.
Right, you're talking about when that takes place.
That's right.
The landscaping would...
And that's how we've done it, I mean, we've got others that have gone through and have put new layers in, and we haven't required that of them at the time.
Not just, not just the top surface, but you're talking about reconstruction of a parking lot.
That's right.
All right, question, if, if tomorrow they came and said, we are gonna redo this parking lot, okay, we're gonna dig it up, and repave it, and whatever, with, in addition to the landscaping and those types of things, would they currently put in sidewalks?
With the, with the ordinance that we have as is.
They would be...
Just passed, we require sidewalks there too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that was one thing we were trying to get clear in our heads, of when sidewalks, when out sidewalks, because the business across the street is how this started, because there's no room for a sidewalk across the street.
Well, there, there is some, but we haven't even been able to really get into that yet, I mean, to, to look at that, so, and, and you did adopt the fee-in lieu, so there are some options there as well. But that's, again, you know, I mean, it's, you know, we're, you know, we want to be reasonable about this, certainly, and I mean, obviously, no ordinance is perfect from the beginning. But, obviously, we're here...
I think you need to have the public hearing for comments before Kevin tries to draw anything.
I think that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just kind of showing you some examples, I mean, this is, you know, a handful of trees, probably, you know, total of, probably, you know, five, five to seven, you know, small caliber trees, it's probably...
And that's a new, that is a new...
This is new, this is new, but I mean, they're the same standards, I mean, you're looking at, you know, one, two, three, you know, and then some street trees right here, probably about six or seven.
And I think we'll definitely get this on the 16th, but I'm, I'm of the opinion, if, if you're not changing the footprint of the building, if you're just going in and repaving the parking lot, I personally don't think sidewalks should be, I don't think that should trigger a sidewalk. Now, if you're going in, expanding the seating in the building, if you're doing major, if you're, if you're changing the footprint of the, of the building, I agree, but if you're just repaving the parking lot, I don't think...
Repaving, that digging up, is that digging up too?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
See, when you say repaving, you either hear what Mr. Ferris says, I mean, is it just putting another coat, or you're digging it up?
I'm okay, as long as you don't change the footprint of the building, I'm okay with it.
I think that's the key, footprint of the building.
Right, and I think that's what's...
Because, because what we're gonna, I'm sorry, because what we're gonna do is, if I'm a small business owner, and I'm thinking about repaving my parking lot, but I know I've got to spend X amount additional, of additional more dollars, okay, what's the incentive for me to do it?
That's right. And, and again, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, we go back to what we've seen elsewhere, and, you know, not many of them tie the sidewalks to that, you know, it, it might have been too much to put in there, I think we could take the sidewalks out.
What you've got on your...
But we were talking about, and what my concern was, it sounded like there was a lot of different issues there, that were going on, in different parts of different ordinances that we were talking about here, and we hadn't really gotten into that. We do have requirements, and there are things that probably do need to go back into those parking lots that exist over there on 52, that were done just recently. And it's very minor, but there's some landscaping and stuff that we would, you know, probably require to be put in. If you take that out, you're gonna have this perpetually right here, you can't, unless they want to do it, we can't go in and require them to put in trees or anything like that in their vast seas of parking there, when they repave it. And, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen there, but I'm, I'd be willing to bet that that lot is gonna be repaved a lot sooner, and you're gonna see the, the buildings there redevelop, or expand greatly, but...
Kevin, I've never seen a lot that big, just completely dug up and be done.
No, well, I mean, we...
Talking about resurfacing lots like that, which is done from time to time, and I don't know, it, those things can look so good when you do it, I don't know why we insist on changing anything, if all they're doing is laying down a, a new layer of asphalt on top.
If they're just putting a new layer of asphalt on top, we don't...
You don't do anything.
We don't do anything, but that's usually, that's usually, and Ross, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna drag you into it, because it's late, but resurfacing like that, laying down a new layer of asphalt, that's usually an intermediate step between pulling everything up and replacing asphalt, isn't it?
It's what we would define as an overlay.
Right, and we have not done that in the past. What we're talking about is, you're tearing everything down.
Don't worry about it.
Well, Kevin just did, they just poured asphalt on it, didn't they?
Whisper pines, and there's another one up the road from there too, that, no, no, theirs actually was down to the dirt.
But we've already grandfathered them.
No, not, not that I know of, we haven't, I mean...
Just for the record, I'd like to remind counsel, we just did this on the King Avenue...
And that's, and that's, I got a lot, you know, right here, as you can see where Ross is putting this in.
That we were made to do because of our own ordinance.
I mean, this is what we're talking about on the city lot, that we, I made, I had to be the bully and make Roscoe agree to put this stuff in, and...
That's right, I remember.
In the next couple of weeks, once it gets a little cooler, he's gonna put these in here, so I mean, it's not just, we're doing this, we're requiring this of the city itself, so...
You gonna put a tree in that lot?
Three of them.
Three of them.
Three of them.
And some, and some shrubs, and that's what, that's what the ordinance requires, it's really not, you know, it's not...
You want everything beautiful.
It's not that, it's really not that, it's, it's very consistent with what most cities have, when it comes to their parking lot, so, that's, that's my suggestion, you know, you know, I'll change the sidewalk ordinance, bring that back to you guys, if you, if you want to get into the landscape ordinance and make those changes, I can do that too, but just kind of wanted some clarification as to what we're, what we're gonna bring back to y'all.
Well, I think what really ignited tonight, having this on, was at the end of the Pfeiffer meeting, at the very end of the Pfeiffer meeting, we brought up that issue, and everybody had gone, I mean, but we brought it up, and we did, yes.
Because he had been contacted by you.
Yes, and I, and I just, and I think you are directing things that go in front of us, and I'm glad you're here, so, I'm glad, and I'm sorry that we just...
And nobody...
It's fine, I just didn't want to fly into a blind and come through and just go, okay, I'm cutting this out, I'm gonna bring him in, and not have, you know, that's all.
And when we started talking about that, we didn't all look around and go, hey, Kevin's not here, let's talk about...
I get it, I get it.
That wasn't it at all.
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to get a, a chance to clarify what it is, you know, y'all were, were looking for, and to kind of let you know what we were, how we were interpreting things when we, you know, when we had done, enforced stuff so far.
But I also don't think as a council, that we, or I personally wasn't thinking landscaping piece is a sep, is a piece over here, sidewalks are a piece, you know, we're, we're throwing it all in there and saying, well, sidewalks, and, and the parking lot and all this, where, to your point...
They're the same chapter, they're right next to each other, but...
But they are in separate areas.
They're separate sections, yeah, sidewalks is its own thing, so...
If council good, we'll have in the public hearing, we're not gonna have an ordinance that night, we'll listen to the public and then go forward.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That would help Kevin, because we don't know what to prepare for, excuse me, so, if you have the public hearing first, and just some decisions made, that helps Kevin, that helps all of us. Yep, it's a good deal.
Kevin, thank you very much for your, your patience with us.
Thanks for giving me a second.
Adam, come on. Number 18, discussion of special order consent application for wastewater treatment plant collection system, and water and sewer division.
Hey, how are you? Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, and I assure you, I'll go through this as fast as I possibly can. Real fast, I'd like to acknowledge some of our staff that you haven't met, you all know Rob, but Suzanne joined us three years ago, she works, does, helps a lot on the projects in the city, and Jackson joined us in May, this is his first council meeting, and I'm...
It's normally not like this, this is not normal.
Rob will be home in five minutes, that's gonna be your pride.
But that's fine, we, we love coming here, and while...
He can boot y'all up on the calendar.
While I'm the one up here talking, they're the ones who've done all the work to get this ready, so thanks to them. I have three things to cover, and Mayor, I'll cover number eight, I think it's number 18 first. So on, this is about the special order, special order back consent, and this is related to several notices of violation that you've had at your wastewater treatment plant, and just to refresh your memory, an SOC, a special order back consent, is a agreement between a utility and the state, typically when there are sustained non-compliant events that cannot be corrected quickly or efficiently. So this is not like a generator fails, or power line falls, this is something where there's a known issue that takes time, funding, and, and many years to fix. So, and forgive me, if I move it too fast, just throw your hand up and I'll stop. Why you're in this situation is mostly dating back to the fall of last year, after Hurricane Florence, and after Hurricane Michael, and then many, many months of, of higher-than-average rainfall, your water table stayed high, you had high flows, at the same time, that flow had low strength from a treatment standpoint, and that triggered a lot of these events, in fact, it triggered all of these. You had nine different notices of violation in, in calendar year 2019. And SOC is not your only choice, like, you, you're not sitting here with no choice, but what an SOC does, is it helps you to avoid an administrative order, or even worse, an is it helps you to avoid an administrative order, or even worse, an EPA administrative order, which was, can then handcuff you to where you don't have a choice and you can't work together. It increases your funding opportunities, and it will, for the most part, slow or even stop the violations while you're going through the process. So, we met on August nineteenth with DEQ staff, Judy was there, and some of your staff were there representing the city, and it was actually a very pleasant meeting and a, and a good meeting. So, what does it actually mean for you? What they want, what the state wants, what they indicated to us they wanted, was they wanted the SOC to basically bind you to, through your consent, to implementing the phase three project that we've been talking about, getting through that, and then let's take about six months and check and see if what you've done with phase two, that's under construction now, and then phase three, that will be under the schedule, gets you back in compliance. The schedule there is, would be, is what the same thing that we have worked in to the SOC document, and this is a normal, in fact, even a little bit loose, schedule that would follow a funded project like the one that we're gonna talk about next on the agenda. So, everyone, us and your staff, I'm speaking for them, I'll let them disagree if they do, but this is a very comfortable schedule, this is not overly ambitious, this is a normal schedule for a funded project. So, I'll just touch on the process real fast. We have a couple of things for you to consider tonight that are in your agenda package. The document is not final, DEQ will review it with the package we send. They may request some changes, we don't think so after our meeting, but they might. If those changes are substantial in the opinion of your staff, they would come back before you to make sure, and we would work with you to make sure that you agree, and then you would maybe readopt or reapprove the application. It does have to sit on public notice for thirty days. In this particular case, there should not be public comment. If there was, then there might be a public hearing. And then, once all that is done, there is a binding and last adoption by you and approval by the state that, that binds those together. So, action required tonight, and I'm moving fast, but there was an application, and I believe, Mr. Ferris, a resolution relative to the SOC in your agenda. So, what we want to do is answer any questions, and then if you would consider approving that.
Are we the, are we one of many that because of both hurricanes last year, and because of the excessive amount of rain this year, have been getting these kinds of letters?
You are one of many that has experienced challenges.
Okay.
I don't know if I would say, I don't know if you're one of many that has experienced as many violations as you have, but you certainly have experienced challenges, or you're certainly not alone in your high flows and low strength and, and challenges related to the storm. We see this all over the state.
Matt, just, DEQ stands for?
Department of Environmental Quality, very good question.
Okay.
What is phase four?
We have not discussed in detail with your staff what phase four would be, yet.
Is that, we're think, at one time, we were talking about behind the, along Sixth Street. Is that gonna be four, Judy, you think, or what?
Four is gonna be, all the way down, same uh.
Kind of.
The next large diameter pipe in your system is follows the eastern track, which kinda follows the twenty-four, twenty-seven bypass, but before you would want to, we've studied phase, the phase three line and seen the history to know this is a problem. I don't know if there's any other parts of your system, but standing here tonight that I can say, you need to spend substantial monies on this part. We would need to study that with your staff.
I, I'm not sure I caught at the beginning, it seemed, it seemed like this, this thing was saying that our problem rose, rose because on three occasions during hurricanes, our system couldn't handle it. Now, I can't believe that any town in North Carolina has a system so good that they can handle three hurricanes.
So.
I think that's what Martha's.
We are in, a lot of folks, a lot of folks are going through the same thing. I was hoping we were not, didn't have more violations than others, but, I mean, nine in account.
Nine in one year, right?
Nine, and the year's not over, but.
Yeah.
In fact, it's been only, it's only been in the last, I think, Judy, since July, that you were back into compliance. Almost, pretty much every month from December through June, you were out of compliance. And it's a, you're not alone, a lot of other communities experience this challenge. Your particular case, your larger diameter steel lines follow creeks, and almost all of them are below the elevation of the creek water. So, when the groundwater comes up, and I'll have some pictures here later in the presentation, that'll show you what the inside of some of these pipes, they just get inundated. And it's not just the volume that causes a problem, it's the volume coupled with low strength wastewater that makes it very hard for your plant, your particular type of treatment, to, to cover that. Now, down the road, I don't want to get into too much detail with this, but if phase two and phase three don't get us to where we think that this is gonna resolve the noncompliance, then an evaluation of your treatment plant to see, are there some things, lower cost things, not big, lower cost things we can do from an operational standpoint with low capital costs that would help correct some of these issues.
So, if you think about what Adam has just mentioned, creeks rising, spilling over their banks, groundwater tables rising, that happens a lot of places. But if we're talking about a sewer system, if the system is in good shape, there should not be, and this goes back to what I and I is all about, inflow and infiltration. The water could get all around it, it shouldn't enter the sewer system, so that's what's causing a lot of our issues, because groundwater is entering our sewer system, therefore, we're treating, you know, multiple times more wastewater at our plant than what's actually been discharged into the system by homes and businesses. So, you know, making these repairs will then, we can't stop the water table from rising, we can stop the groundwater from getting into the sewer system.
Mayor, forgive me if I get too long-winded, please.
Oh, go ahead.
The DEQ, that the Department of Environmental Quality staff, and they're the regulatory agency that governs your, your collection system and treatment plant, they were very complimentary of your staff and of you as a governing body for the dollars that you have and are spending on the rehabilitation. Candidly, when we sat down with them, we were expecting, we were fearful that they were going to demand more than what they did, or request more than what they did. We were very pleasantly surprised to find out that what they really wanted you to do was implement a project that, in my personal opinion, you probably were, were inclined to do anyway.
Anyway, right.
Right. So, I don't feel like this request, in its current state, the way we've written it, and the way we're asking you to consider approving tonight, is really penal in any way. It feels to me like it's.
But you said we had more violations.
You do have, yes.
Actually, it was the, last time we did a special, it was to our benefit, we had that special consent, 'cause we got more grants. And that's what I was talking to you today about, kinda wording it where we might get more grants.
Correct. And, and it will be to your benefit, so what the SOC does for you is, for one, it kinda waves the white flag, and, and the state agrees that you can't fix this problem quickly, right? So, the penalties and the fines and the violations are going to, if not stopped, be significantly reduced. But it also gives you extra points on a funding application, and Suzanne's been working on that, we're gonna talk about that next. It really gives you a leg up on a lot of other applicants that will be coming in seeking the same pot of money.
Does this put us possibly in line for any of the utility, that new, the new legislature that's passed, the passed legislature, utility, I forgot what it was, something fund?
So, the, the rules for accessing that, and I'm loosely familiar with it, have not come out yet, so this cycle that you're considering this fall will not have that pot of money available.
So, do we need to do specifically on this?
We need to, we need to approve the resolution and give, and, and give Michael Ferris the authorization.
I move.
Sign, so.
I move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to number nineteen, and talk about resolution to the sewer.
These are all three connected, and Mayor, you tell me if you, you want me to stop talking. We had gone, we've gone over some of this before, but just a real quick recap, you have spent, you have or are in the process of spending almost ten million dollars since 2014 on sewer system rehabilitation. So, phase one finished in fourteen, phase two is, they're digging right now, and then phase three would go on top of that. So, this is what DEQ was saying, they were very pleased at your, in past and current investment. Just some real quick pictures, this is what, you've seen these before, this is what the pipes we pulled out of the ground in phase one, just another shot, this was taken just down below Old Charlotte Road. This is just an example, the pipe that goes back in the ground. So, this particular pipe, to give you a feel for scale, is three feet in diameter and one inch thick, so it's big, hardy stuff. And you probably saw stacks of pipe like this down near West Cassett Mills a few weeks ago. The phase three line, and Mayor, I have some maps, I know this is hard to see, if you'd like to see it, I'm happy to pass out maps, just let me know. This is odd, because the map is turned to the side, north is to the right on the screen. This is the bypass, twenty-four, twenty-seven bypass right here, that's the bridge over Little Long Creek, that's the bridge over Long Creek. The wastewater plant sits right here. So, just some real quick points, if you remember back to the spring, the gap right here is what your staff replaced on their, using their own resources in, in May. And then this gap right here is actually a line that was replaced by your staff about, actually about ten years ago, so that's in fairly good shape.
That's good.
Just some real quick examples, some of these you've seen before, and I won't get too detailed on what it's like to camera sewer lines, but you're looking at a twenty-four inch pipe with joints, these are each different joint, that's a joint, that's a joint. What you're seeing here is moss growth, roots, all coming in where the joints have, have pulled apart or cracked, and the, the roots are seeking in. What you don't see here, if this was a video, you would see it, all these are dripping water, just dripping water all the time. And we have a joint every four feet, over thousands of feet of pipe, and they're all dripping water. This is a lot of what contributes to the challenge, correct. Just another shot.
Bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
Bottom under, under the sole, or?
It is, yes. So, this particular pipe is about twelve feet deep, dirt on top of it. Just another shot, this is, this pipe was live, this is, line is flowing, you can see the top of the pipe here, how it's crushed, don't know why, and this happens over time, but this again is another source of inflow. Another example, this is a little bit more difficult to see, you see the roots hanging in, but you see this line right here, that's a longitudinal crack. Same thing right there, runs all the way to the joint of the pipe, so there's water seeping in all the time. You can see this here also, you see this, this is a crack coming down the side where that old clay pipe is cracked. So, all these are on, the same thing on the bottom right here where this joint is cracked. So, all these are on the line that, that we are, are planning to replace.
These pipes were put in about when? Just give me an idea. Seventy-five years ago.
Fifties and sixties.
Fifties and sixties, so fifty years ago.
So, just real quick, this is about nine thousand, nine thousand feet of twenty-four, eighteen, and twelve inch, that piece north going towards Kingsley is the twelve inch piece, everything south of there is eighteen and twenty-four. Also, recommended to be included in the scope, slightly different, not pipeline rehabilitation, this goes back to your wastewater plant and the electrical challenges the plant experienced in 2013. If you remember, the phase two project that is under construction right now includes the year one scope. This was a six-year plan that was developed, multimillion dollar plan, and we implemented year one, or are implementing year one right now. So, the recommendation of us and staff is to include years two and three of the six-year plan in this next project's scope. Now, it, there's some benefit there, this, this again boosts your funding application. Part of the reason you got zero percent and grant money the last time was because we were able to link this violation to an impaired stream, to fixing and direct violations, all this kinda ties together to, to make you a favorable fund, funding application. Just a real quick breakdown, six point two, six point three million dollars is our total estimate. You can see it's almost half in the pipeline work and the electrical work at the treatment plant. Some synopsis of the funding program that we're recommending you apply for, applications are due at the end of September, there's a resolution for your consideration. It's twenty-year money, there is the opportunity for zero percent, there is the opportunity for some grant dollars, if, again, the last of the phase two project, you got five hundred thousand, received five hundred thousand in grant. But if you look at the bottom of the screen there, you'll see, and if you, it's been years ago since we talked about this, but zero percentage just makes a big difference in, in your, your annual payment, and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in, in the first year. Schedule, and we won't go through this in detail, but you see at the bottom here, we would not expect the debt from this project to hit your budget until fiscal year 2024. So, it takes, takes about three years to implement these, and then the debt doesn't hit the books until six months after the project is completed.
So, actually, we would be agreeing to something that a future council would have to think.
Mayor, that's the, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm trying to keep this moving out of respect for your time, but.
Counsel, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Lauter, submit resolution. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number twenty, approval of change order number one.
Here you go, Dr. Bramlett, change order.
I move approval of the change.
It is a, not very significant, and what it meant basically is, the pipe, the pipe was a different size than they went to do it than they thought it would be, so I think it's about eleven thousand dollars.
It is, it is.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Lauter. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for being here. Now, one quick question, have you give any estimate on what it's gonna cost to put the Tucker Town Water Intake out into deep water?
We, we estimated that, we worked with your staff, and we did a similar project, this was years ago, in Anson County. And we estimated, this, this was six years ago, it was about three and a half million dollars. So, we had, I'd have to go back and look at it, don't quote me, but that's what it was then.
I'm having some concerns right now with all the algae blooms and bacteria issues that you're seeing these other places have, that we may need to move that up. I'm, I'm just concerned about that.
That's right.
Our water's gonna be safe or not?
It is a concern. I would want to speak with your staff and, and make sure that if there's some operational modifications they can implement to avoid that large capital cost, but it, where that intake is located is a little bit confusing. It's, it's not in a great spot.
If you'll just think about that, I have a little concern. That'd be a good grant that the DEQ should get of.
It would.
Thank you.
Mayor, our pleasure, thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all be careful going home.
Twenty-one, update to the council by Special Events Committee. Who's doing that?
Lisa. Well, Lisa Marthu, but is, we have it up there, Lisa?
Thank all of you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be safe. We're gonna make this very quick. We're meeting, we usually meet once a month, and we met three weeks ago. We are meeting tomorrow night, because the middle of September was gonna be too long away, so if you'll run through there, we'll just make it really quick. We've added somebody, you'll see, we've added Dana McDowell there, and she had moved, she has already brought a great bit of energy. This is a little bit more specific for Thursday night, you see, that's just the children's night downtown, what we've done every year, go on to Friday. This is nailed down, this is pretty cool. Ghost Tours at the History Center. Back and Dash, Peter has left, but Peter has been an absolute jewel when it comes to all that he is helping us with, is that not right, Lisa?
Yes.
He, we've worked together, Ghostbusters are coming that night to be wandering through town. You can see the movie that we have at the auditorium is Jeepers Creepers, and the cool thing is, is that Troy Jackson, who was the original person that played in that movie, will be here that night. So, there's been a lot of stuff going on. Saturday, we're starting down at Farmer's Market with the craft show. At ten o'clock that morning, there's a children's, that, the central auditorium, that is a children's movie, the one the night before will be a scary one for adults. Then we've got this all day, all day downtown festival going on, and you see in the middle of that, where's Judy, Judy's in the back. We have the electric car from Electric Cities is gonna be here, plus all kinds of other kinds of things during the day. And then we head down the street to Market Station. The last time we came before you, the Chamber of Commerce was doing their Brew.
Brew and Q.
Brew and Q, and they have now, yeah, they have now canceled that. So, we are doing something that night, they canceled it three weeks ago, and we jumped on it and said, we need to capitalize on that. So, we have a band already, R and B kind of band.
Yeah, Mr. Please is their name.
Yeah, Mr. Please is the name of them. I'd never heard them, but they're coming, and we're gonna tomorrow night finalize all the things that we're gonna be doing on Saturday night, next. There it is, we've got a street banner that we're gonna put up on West Main out in front of the Corner Market, the, the.
Yes.
Yeah, out there's where the street banner's gonna be. We've had some folks on council who have secured some money, so thanks, Martha. Hughes came through at the Corner Market with some money. We're still looking for some sponsors tomorrow night, we gotta nail down all the money that we have out there, so that we'll know where we're going. Next. Yeah, so volunteers are really needed for this. Thursday night's pretty much taken care of. Friday night, Amanda Griffey from the Arts Council has got Talent Company Kids and West Stanley Kids that are gonna be doing stuff downtown, helping us with the frightening part. Peter is donating t-shirts for every volunteer that's helping in doing anything. So, I just commend this group, commend Lisa, my fellow council members who are on there. We meet again tomorrow night at six thirty at Market Station.
Correct.
Any questions?
We're gonna have food trucks on Saturday night, food trucks Saturday night.
We're still working Saturday night, we're thinking that we may do, okay, this is out there, a cook-off of some sort by some agencies out there that might be multiple agencies in the county. So, down there to.
You can have some food or something.
Yes, we will have food of some type.
Some type of food.
Okay.
What was that, Shirley? I was just wondering about that little circle down there at the, where you gonna serve the beer and wine, out there on the road.
Pedestrian there, pedestrian.
Oh, no, we'll be out in the, out in the.
What about that circle?
You talking about the pedestrian crossing?
I don't know what it is, I've never seen anything like it.
Well, they're not through with it. They gotta come in and do some striping and everything, and then we'll be some, we'll be doing some crosswalk work.
So, but Friday, but Saturday night, there'll be all kinds of stuff going on town. So, we are capitalizing on people being down there, and there'll be a run on, the runs on Friday night.
Friday evening at six thirty.
So, that was a change, yeah, so. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-two, quarterly new business update.
Cool.
And everything will be on three different Facebook pages, the City, Parks and Rec, and ADDC, thank you. Oh, yeah, it's gonna be on there, and they're supposed to be out there.
And, let's see.
Oh, yeah, it's going to be on there, and they're supposed to be. Thank you, Lisa.
Not, unfortunately, not a, I apologize for getting this to you a little bit late, we had, we always get a trickle of them coming in after the cutoff with the coordination forms and everything, and we were waiting to hear back from a couple of the, a couple of those coordination forms at the last meeting too. So we got them in here, not a whole lot of activity, we got some, definitely some smaller businesses, and we got a few that are moving around, none of the big 120-plus job businesses opening up this time. Little background, quarter two of 17 and 18, we had 84 and 83 respectively, I think, of positions, new jobs that were created, so I'm a little bit behind with that. However, combined so far through the year, through these two quarters, we're a little bit actually ahead of 2017 or 2018. That's about it, not much to it.
So we've also had the new place, the new wings thing up at Gold's.
That's right, that'll probably be on the next quarter.
Probably on third quarter.
Yeah, third quarter, and the pizza place over at Harris Teter.
Has that opened yet?
Has it opened? They put their sign up.
Their sign's up.
There's a therapy place in the old natural gas building, old, they'll be open in October.
Yes, yes, we got a coordination form in for that one.
There's some, there's some things on the.
Definitely a lot of stuff, yeah. I think historically, this second quarter's been a little bit slower for us, so.
Thank you, Kevin. Ethics training for recently elected and re-elected officials?
Shirley.
So that would be?
That'd be.
Shirley.
Chris Whitley and myself, so we can either, we can watch it, Michael, or we can get together and do it as a group or separate or?
Right, we've got a code or a link that everyone can use, so as far as I understand it, it's a little different than what they've done before, but you can watch it at your house, council get together.
How long is it?
Usually.
It's supposed to be two hours, but I bet you it's not.
Okay.
So you can do it collectively, individually, you don't want to make it as convenient as possible for everybody, so if you wanted to come in here, we can make some space available, community room, you can watch it right here.
How do we document that?
At, so, you know, there's no reporting, as far as I understand, to the state, it's sort of self-reporting, and we're supposed to have a form that we keep on file with the city clerk. So the description of the program says that at the end of the webinar, there's information where to go to certify self-report that you've seen this webinar.
What do y'all want to do?
Does it go to the same, does it go to the same ethics area of the state where we file those forms?
No, it's not.
You don't file anywhere.
I'm talking about like for RPO, the form I have to do.
No, no.
That's not the same.
Totally different. This is just required to be filed here.
Yeah, just in case.
I think it's interesting for cities to be aware for other things.
So y'all want to watch it individually or you want to do it as a group? I don't care.
And as you're asking that, we still haven't gotten an answer if we can share it with others, is that right?
Have not gotten an answer.
That's so sad.
And I just, I wanted to, I wanted to ask because we purchased it for Almoral, and I could see where they'd say, well, we prefer everyone purchase it because we need to make money to keep these things viable, and I haven't heard back, so I've reached out to two folks there, I know they've got some other things going on, but that's just where it stands.
Should we just pick a time and come up here and?
The three of us watch it?
Cue it up in there?
I think that'd be, I'd prefer that, I mean, and I know you two are flexible, but I can take, if we can get a time, I'll make it work.
Yep, y'all besides?
Well, we'll.
Let's just not offer.
Okay, well, you know, Michael.
All right, number 24, consider road closures and fee waiver for pin-ups and pumps car show. You've been here all night!
Bless our hearts.
One, one quick, one quick question.
Oh, wow.
Tiffany, we had a question when the application come in, you showed that you wanted to close North Street and South Street, and.
I already read the little notes in there, I'll do whatever y'all want.
Are you good coming inside of that?
Yeah.
Because that gives us our access around town, North and Depot and there, so we block it at Depot.
No, we're actually, so I think we have to come in anyways because for that, so we already have a different subject register.
How did you do that? Because I've not seen anything about it.
We have no luck.
So you're actually good from Third and Main?
Sorry, but what I'm worried about is the people who are going to watch where they're going to park at, so we need to, we need to bring the end on the streets of, so that parking lot right there on, what's that, Second and Main isn't inside the area anymore, it's outside of the.
Do you want to bring?
Somebody's going to bar.
You want to bring Second and First back up to just this side of Kings?
This side of King is.
That way you leave, they can get to the courthouse parking lot, they can get to the other parking lot, is that which one do?
We need to park the second street.
Okay. And then you're going to block on First Street, at North and Second at North?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Marauder to approve.
Second.
Second, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
We can park cars on both sides of Main Street and both sides of First Street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all we need to do.
Yeah.
Because then we can fit enough cars.
You got 170 cars already?
A hundred.
A hundred cars registered.
Over 170 registered.
Wow, that's awesome.
And it's a car show where they have to pay to register?
Yeah, that's the money that's one that's.
Right, but they have to pay.
And a motion by Councilmember Alder, second by Councilmember Louder, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 25, consider road closure for Almont High School pet rally.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 26, street lighting on NC 2427, all street lighting is responsibility of the city. Ms. Hall says she had got a complaint about the area between, basically the main complaint was between Leonard and Henson, correct?
Correct.
There, we have to go where there's light circuits, so if we, if we go to another pole, there's only one pole that I see we probably missed, because we try to go every other pole, either one side of the road or the other. If we go, there's one place there about where Chick-fil-A is, but we will have to run a couple of, a light circuit, a couple of poles to put that in. I just, I don't know that it's a big issue.
Well, come back down, come back down, come back down, it's not just Henson, come back down to Spalding or even.
All of that, all of that area meets our, meets our current guidelines.
Okay, because that's where he was talking about, he said from the time you get where 2427 crosses the old 52, at the bridge.
Turn left.
Okay, at the bridge headed east. He said it gets dark through there about the John Deere plant, I mean, John Deere, it's really dark through there until you get to where all the activity is.
We, we meet all of our policies except for that one place, the thing that I think he's seeing is, remember, our poles are up on Spalding Street, so they're, that's a pretty good ways from the road, but I think.
Oh, versus on 52.
I think when we actually put that hotel in there, opening that up, all that woods gone, that may solve that issue with all the woods coming out.
Development's going to change.
Well, it is, and he, and I just told him that I would find it out, and the thing about it is, we thought DOT was responsible for it. Okay, so what we learned was, is that we're not, we are.
We do all that, okay. Number 27, information with stream fiber internet update, that's for your information, council, have any comments?
Thank you.
I'm going to keep us moving then. We have a meeting on September the 17th scheduled to talk about the Commercial Maintenance Code. Does anyone have a conflict on Monday the 23rd if we move that?
Yeah, I'll be out of town.
You'll be out of town?
I'm out of town.
You'll be out of town, okay, we'll have to stay with the 17th then. Michael and I've got a conflict and I, we.
Are y'all going to DC?
Yes, and that's the, the only time we can cut, we can make it work before they go in recess.
I've got a conflict on Monday too.
On Monday what?
Seventeenth.
The 17th?
We've got a conflict on.
So hold on, he's got a conflict on the 17th as well.
It's a Tuesday, right?
Yeah. Tuesday's the 17th, yeah.
He hasn't.
It's the night of our regular meeting.
We can move that, but if you want to move it somewhere else, I'd be, we got the, we can look at the 24, Michael and I could actually miss the little cog liaison meeting if we want to move it to the 24.
Kevin's still gone.
Kevin, you gone on 24th too? Well, we need you here. You gone any entire week?
I think I get back.
Yeah, we need him here.
Yeah, we, we got to have him here. For now, we'll leave it at the 17th if council wants to change.
Look at the 25th then, that's that Wednesday night.
What about the 18th or the 25th?
18th is when we're going to be going, going to DC. 25th?
25th is on Wednesday.
Bill's gone on the 25th.
I'll be in DC.
Yeah.
Well, good, you can come and go lobby with us.
I'm good, let's go.
All right, so what other days, I mean?
Somebody gone on the 25th?
Yeah, Bill can't be on the 25th.
I'm on, I'll wait, 23rd, I'll leave the 23rd, come back on 27.
All right, I don't know of any other, other dates.
The night of the 18th, what y'all say?
We're gone.